Um. Um. So the last minute, alright. What's that?
You're gonna do the minutes and stuff first, I'm gonna make that.
Why? Um. I'd like to call to order this meeting in the Swamp Planning Commission on Monday, January sixth, twenty twenty five at five oh one P M. First agenda item to review. Um.
Nobody got anything?
You just gotta plan the meetings and the hearings as you wanna go forward.
Yep. Um.
Do that after.
You guys will probably move uh if you have something specific, I think you do Earl. Public comment up if you guys wanna talk first and then.
No, I don't really, other than uh I'm all set.
Okay.
Uh I just want everybody to know that this is a very important thing. You know, that's.
Yeah.
You know, and I wanna make sure and I I know that you're here. That we're in compliance with all state regulations concerning the new housing and also development on later.
Yeah, so.
We'll get it.
Yeah, but you can get in.
Get finished it. We'll do a public comment, I think first, so we can.
We'll go. We'll go through it uh.
Do that number four.
Yeah, we'll move the public comment up to number four. Um then we can make sure we can address anything you guys wanna say and if you wanna stick around after your. Um. Anything else? Uh. Review meeting minutes of December ninth, twenty twenty four. Understand the motion. I do know. Just before forget uh fees, I don't know if you wanted to talk, it was either you.
We don't need.
You or Joel had some uh Brian mentioned to me about the fees and I I do wanna talk about. But I also wouldn't mind. Potentially pushing that, like I know Amy has her own thoughts with some of that stuff too, so. If that doesn't get any character in this bylaw rewrite, maybe it's something you do as a amendment and not to this.
Amendment.
Yeah, probably Joel, it wasn't me so much it.
Okay, I.
My only concern was theme is hopefully covers our uh.
Yep.
I don't think it does now.
No. Uh but Joel, uh Brian mentioned it to me and I just, I wanted to say it out loud before I forget about it.
I'd like to make a motion that we include the mention of the meeting of. December nine, two thousand twenty four as written.
Now secondly, motion's been made and seconded, there any discussion? During none, all those in favors uh do five or say no?
Aye.
That's. Hard not to say are. Hard, it's habit, isn't it?
So uh my answer to those comments, I'm.
Uh yeah, so we'll go to public comment and if we want, would take any input you guys have and Corey and uh.
So for the housing law, the biggest change I think in the whole zoning. We went word by word to the whole document, which is why it took so long and then we thought about stuff and came back, but. The biggest changes are is right now there are three residential zones in Swan. There is um that we ultimately are shrinking back to two. And they're gonna be basically, well, fine, I mean, they're, these aren't the names, but wherever there's water and sewer. Wherever there's not. Because the state has two different forms of new housing regulation and it depends on if you have water and sewer. Or not, so the new map where when we've got a match in the village, we're slower from regional get the map finalized. Where that is, you'll have, we'll need all the state regulations, so that's basically. You can't require a lot be either getting one fifth of an acre, whatever you allow a single family home, you have to allow a four unit home. There's a lot of different things there, so we, and then what we did in that zone too, we looked at lock coverage. Your current bylaws say building coverage. Which was confusing because exactly the driveway does it not, we changed the term to lock coverage, so it's impervious surface for the whole lot. And we increased that substantially, you know, from like thirty forty percent to like sixty.
Sixty five eight, sixty.
But.
Yeah, I'm I've been looking through it, the draft and.
Yeah, but we went substantially.
So hard.
Um because in that, the goal was, you know, you could build on a. One fifth of an acre, that's that's roughly eighty seven, it's eighty seven hundred and twelve square feet. So if you allow them to cover half of it impervious, we only have about four to three hundred square feet of impervious surface they can do, so by the time you do your parking.
Building.
Your building, you can get there pretty easily, so we.
Yeah. Very easily.
Very easily, so so we we adjusted that quite a bit, um. We went to everything outside of that for residential was on one acre lots where there's no water and sewer. Um we adjusted some things there, like technically you needed at least two hundred feet over frontage and two hundred feet depth. We shrunk it just a little bit, so that way if there's the new locks a little oblong, not. Not gross enough on.
It's one fifty, we went to one fifty minimum.
Instead of two hundred minimum, so they go maybe to two fifty feet, you know. Not kind of hopefully build as many roads as as having.
And allow people, there's some not swampy lots, but just make it a little easier, maybe can fill some lots in random places like that where that. Because originally I was having this conversation with my dad. When they, when they subdivided on D E road, it was three hundred was the min. And and he he, I could've got another and I was telling him how we're going down to one fifty, you think I could've gotten two more lots in here type of thing was the the conversation. Um I was having and and it's obviously got smaller, but it does mean those lots have to be deeper to hit that. One acre threshold.
So I'll just pull it up now, um is one acre a state requirement or do you have any or do we have any options on that? You could go smaller.
Well.
For us sewer, but if it's kind of it's gonna come down to does it hurt or not?
Place one, with one.
Yeah.
One acre is kind of where the state. Allows it to be now there, so here's the thing. These bylaws will probably be out of date again by July, cause the state's gonna do another housing bill, like. So what we tried doing a lot of this. Is we define terms, instead of putting the words of like a definition, if we're you, if we're referencing the law anyways. We just reference the law, so if the state ever changes the law, you're already up to date on it, you just have to go change it. Well, you don't, you just have to.
He 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 references the number.
So that way like as defined, so like shoreline.
So.
Shoreline regulations as defined by twenty four B S A da 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 da, so if they ever change those words, you don't have to write a new bylaw. You just.
It's there.
It's already there because we're referencing state law. Um but I don't think this will happen this year, but the state's starting to look at. Soil based zoning, so that like in high heat, if you're on mountain sand, you don't need an acre to.
That's my thinking here, you know.
And so.
Yeah.
That that is something we have not contemplated in these bylaws, but something we couldn't. If you can get a permit from the state and waste water, you can get a half acre. I don't know how the board feels, I personally don't care if that's what the select board wants us to look at, we. Can draft that language, it's just one acre is kind of the number the state uses where there's no water.
Well, it's it's only because of the water sewer issue, some there's some one acres aren't gonna make it.
Nope.
No.
You're absolutely right.
But then you got other.
Between the allowance and the.
You think you got land like your father's dog, or you guys are.
You could dig twenty feet down there and it is clean, straight, beautiful sand.
Yeah, and and so you could put more house with denser on that kind of land.
Yep.
And leave the other land alone.
Yeah.
If it can't, if it doesn't have the capacity for sewer.
Yeah. Yeah, that's that's absolutely.
I don't know if it could be put in has uh you know, like the development report could. You know, if it can pass. If the.
Well, but I mean realistically, it would be in a P U D then anyways, right?
You go to a P U D is what you'd end up doing, Earl.
Can you do that for one house though?
Huh, not for one house, but you can put a P U D in or.
There's one guy that half acre lot now that hurts.
You know.
And can have the shielding and the, cause you get into.
But most of your P U Ds are gonna have water septic. All combined and not part of the P U D.
Yeah, what I'm talking about.
I understand what you're talking about.
You can change it, you know, like, but it might make itself affordable. If he doesn't have to buy that much land or you know, or is it, or the guy that's development, developing it, developing. Selling property is cheaper because he doesn't have to have two acres, he can do it on one. Because the land can, as long as the state, you know, it makes all the place where requirement.
Man. Well, you gotta think about the math too, and in my head as a builder, right, you think about. The layout, you you know, I'm on point six, seven acres is my my house and that is. And I've got water and sewer granted, my s- my septic was put in in the sixties, so you know, it doesn't probably take up as much land. But I'm again, all clean, beautiful sand where I am. That's about as small as I wanna be with my wells and my septic and and making sure everything's kind of laid, so we could maybe go to three acres.
So I I I know it's not, but this is out. I used to have the house here. But um. Well, that was mine at one point and um this was all built on wells. And septic and they're on third acre lots. Now, I don't know if you could do that today, but these were built in nineteen fifties and sixties. Um so.
Maybe they have a setback for the water and sewer, prove the water and septic would be.
But the reason I got that there is cause I still have the original leasehold, I wanna get out before sale. Cause the, me managing whole yard do uh uh as something else, but um.
Yeah, so I mean, we we can certainly look at that, that's the policy direction that the the select board.
Well, I'm not saying that's a policy direction that the select board. The select board hasn't really had any discussions on it, and this is why I wanted to come here, because this is very important.
Well, yeah, we're at closing end, now's the time, speaking of for hold your peace for six months or you don't want to come before us, you know, ready to have something signed. Oh, yeah.
I need to see us, but I'm below an acre to be honest with Earl.
Can you be tight?
Because it's gonna make it tight, let's say somebody must have put in a P U D like Gamache did. Some of the others, then you get down to a half acre. And both there, of course, they're under a different regulation anyways, so. But water and sewer does become a problem, like you were speaking about being in there with. Everybody has drilled well and you got a septic over here twenty feet away, I think.
You can't.
But they they ran, they ran public waters through there since they built it.
Well, that could very well be, but.
Yeah, yeah, but originally, yeah.
I'll never, I'll, you know, like my law, I'll never see public water sewer and with with what I have there, it would um. Would be tight, you know?
And and just to get back to, I looked up, we went to fifty percent lot coverage in the village, we can go more, fifty was just magic, I don't know.
I thought we went a little bit higher. I I think we, one of the other things we did, Earl, so you know, we were, what we did is. We made some of those setbacks, especially in the village, smaller setbacks. But with the hope of decreasing the workload on the D R B by making it easier for people to get permits. But removing the, what is it, the the three, what's that rule? Thirty percent, thirty percent.
We 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 got rid of all the variance stuff and we just shrunk it, cause we're gonna let give you a thirty percent grants anyways.
Right, with with.
They got the same.
On the ten, but thirty.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's up to being twenty five, just leave it.
Just major kitting all together, but know that people are people are gonna come in, D R B is not gonna have a real wiggle room on those variants. Kind of a thought process, because they obviously have a, have had a pretty. Busy play with between that and just a whole bunch of, whole bunch of stuff, so that should help kind of take some stuff off the payload.
Yeah.
Well, that's gonna cause a lot less things come to the D R B, therefore there will be less ready.
Yeah, and then we also did um.
I didn't think of that.
And like some other things we did, so right now a setback of a building in the village is thirty five feet. We went to twenty five feet maximum, or we actually stole this from Ennisburg. It's the average of the houses on each side of you, so that way you're kind of just in line with whatever's built. Thirty five is our standard, like you want it to look like it's been.
Otherwise.
Kind of the development.
That one right there is the thing that should be done. Especially where you've got older houses, transit set up over here, zip it, transit here. If that includes the porches, that's as far out as they come.
Andy with Duke's law.
Keep it. Andy Missouri's law, especially that.
Yeah. The corner of Pine and Canada.
Yeah, yeah.
Why why set that way back there and not have a matched neighborhood, it don't make sense.
Exactly, yes, I went there this summer.
That's, that's what that's for.
And it didn't, I looked at it and it, you know. You know who it is, uh and I said, you know, it doesn't make any sense.
No, so we tried to address that because hard part with zoning is you pick a number out of the air, right? And it doesn't.
Doesn't make everybody happy, think of everything.
Fine, and and if you watch all these videos, you'd hear me say this a hundred times, you can't build the village of, you can't build this village route here. Under a current zoning bylaw, you can't build the city of St. Alton's.
Yeah.
In their their current zoning bylaws, you can't build all these downtowns we all say we love under a current zoning regulations. There's a problem in your zoning regulation if you can't build what you love.
Yeah.
So that on them corner lots and like we we stay on a pine tree in Canada, is this gonna address the issue?
That right there is, the front yard setback.
Yeah.
Or structures in this district shall be the average of the front yard setbacks of the principal buildings located on either side of the proposed structure.
So, so on on the corner lot, the building next door on this corner and the one on this corner, you basically have the same setback as those from both roads, both roads.
Yeah.
When is, when does somebody build years ago before the zoning, they never write up? On on the building property?
So, uh I, the average, and it says it's the average of that, so it was principal structures, so.
Average. The average.
It would be more than just like it, obviously if there was one, but the rest.
So it doesn't require them to build closer, just they could build further back if they wanted.
Right.
But that just allows us, they don't have to build back thirty, right now you have to build back thirty feet, five feet. You could build that minimum, the maximum the town or yeah, the town can allow you to. Closest to the road, the town can say you can't build is twenty five feet unless the averages is closer.
This is the way.
World, you know what I mean, but at no point are we making you build, now you could, if I was building a house, I would probably build further back. If the average had to be right on the road, that's a personal decision, it's just the regulation doesn't.
But like.
But what you can fill on that.
How far is the right away on the village streets?
Be front center line, plus whoever's road.
Twenty three rods, several of the roads.
So you're saying if they change that number.
That's what.
Yeah.
Yeah, like on a middle road, it's thirty three feet, you will change that number to.
We won't, this won't apply to the village.
No.
This would be the village, this is only in the village.
It's in the village.
Correct. So the those numbers that are currently there are gonna be lower, yeah.
Um, just in the, just in the village.
Not in the village.
Right.
It's the village.
Because we've got streets where there's houses that are like.
Okay, I have, I have a place in a village and I'm just wondering, because there's one house. That's really right next to the road. The porch is bad and it's right next to the road and.
So so say that one was ten feet off the road and the one house on the other side of your property was twenty feet off the road, you'd have to be fifteen feet off the road. Minimum, you could be more. But you could minimal, the closer the road you can get is fifteen feet. In that scenario. And you average it to two, cause we're trying to get this, when you look down the road.
It looks stuck.
It looks somewhat straight, obviously it's never perfect, but you don't wanna have the new regulations be thirty five and the whole roads at twenty two.
And then you got one house.
Another little, another little factor comes into play here. You take and look down a road, and you go out and drive, let's say you're newcomer to the area, you come into the area, you drive out and. Realtor says, well, I got a house here for sale, house here, here's let's say. Then you drive down that road and one house is way back and one is up front, one back. You wanna wanna be in the neighborhood like that, that's what a lot of people look at.
Or someone's back here.
In other words. It's what they see as they drive by right before they ever get inside.
Yeah, well, that 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 makes sense, that's definitely gonna be better than what we're doing now.
And the factor you like Earl, you were talking about. Any the or.
Yeah.
Of the Duke's property up there, if the simple fact is setback leaves them no backyard.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
That's what the other thing.
The part that is the real killer.
Yeah.
And that's why I say, hey, any contractor that doesn't have a tran- transit can't be a contractor.
You run it with a string as well.
Straight down the side of the street.
I chill, I went by an eye.
Yeah.
And we mean.
And he doesn't go by the eye, we know that, oh, we can better root it.
But we also eliminated a few districts, just so you know too, because.
Yeah, but I don't, I look through it.
We thought, we thought there was too many that didn't really have a distinct difference between them, especially like.
Yeah.
Your central bus- business district, your transportation. District, this, the district.
Neighborhood light commercial, neighborhood commercial, like.
They go. Some private, some dances, as best we could.
Yeah, some of that stuff got added in to correct problems and it just, you know, it kept building up to keep adding.
Yeah, exactly, that's kind of all you need to do.
Doing all, totally doing the whole thing. Because neighborhood commercial light started because of the where the liquor store and Pam's is, and there used to be a restaurant there. Well, they weren't, they they couldn't do none of that stuff, you know, Wesley been hired, Eden came in, paid him five hundred dollars to change the bylaw. But I did bring his check back to him, I said, you know, Wesley, it's always a sense, yeah, I was gonna do something, say, well, I have businesses here. And hopefully in the future, something better will be happening there.
Oh, but he was in, the new owner was in here three, four years ago? It was within, it was his fault.
Wasn't it?
Dang.
Oh, that is a lot here.
You're doing this somewhere.
Well, yeah, it was, I sugar, anyway, okay. Um but yeah, he was in, he was in here, um.
Because what he wants takes longer than the bylaws were written for.
But we we came back to him with a better solution, um.
Because he's right up against the property, the neighbor too.
And and he would be more in conformance with what he wanted to do, he would have put him into better conformance, better bylaws, so anyways.
Better, yeah.
But his other issue was lot coverage, is he hundred percent lot coverage with parking lot?
Yeah, but again, it was the same, uh he wasn't, as long as he didn't put himself into. More out, less conformance, because he already a hundred percent.
More.
You're both, speaking of not conformance, also so right now, like you got damage or you're. Discontinue a use that isn't conforming, you had to do it for a year, we increased that to eighteen months or potentially went to three years. Because try getting, especially if your house burns down, your apartment building burns down or something, try getting your insurance claim done and build within a year, that's what your current bylaws are, it's like.
Can you build a house within a year?
It has to be built in a year, let alone, we kind of like, you have to get your permit within eighteen months and kind of show us you're working towards it, just because.
It's getting extended.
It might take, by the time you get through it all, two to three years.
That's one, my question's on the fact, but what my review was you had eighteen months, I don't think I got over twenty four.
That's fine, we we agreed on eighteen months.
We we kind of made a pick, but I'm open to making it longer because I think about um. Brown pigeon pigeon lips, after that fire, that house fire across from me, that house sat and and the.
Yeah. Especially the investigated and all.
Well, the daughter and son-in-law live next door to me and I talked to that, they were living with them and it was, it was all between the investigation and insurance companies fighting over things and.
Yeah.
It was just a mess and it was living hell for them, so they shouldn't have to loot on permit like that.
Yeah, because we don't, we don't have a lot of places to develop, especially you know, if you're in this building area. Where you got water and sewer, you know, that twenty four months makes a lot of sense, yeah.
I'm definitely fine, I'm changing it to twenty four.
That's a big factor.
Yeah, the other, the other place I just got to update here, where we have building heights in the village, down in this core area and in the growth center. We originally had thirty five feet or um thirty five and a half feet. We are are thirty five feet, we're bumping it and this is talking to your fire department. Four stories or sixty feet, whatever's higher, cause that's your ladders can get.
Yeah.
Um because you might as well use the height that you're allowed to get to and.
Build up if we can't build up.
This doesn't require you to build another truck, like we built seventy five feet, but then you need another truck, yes. That's a different.
But can you still do another story on top of that if it's low income housing, can they access that?
Yeah, this, that's what the other reason we left, cause that's four and sixty, cause the state of Vermont.
So they could access five stories?
They.
He said he's got a hundred foot ladder.
Which can get him up like seventy five, but we didn't want to put seventy five because it helps more.
As well, because I know I'm.
Seven, that's where we went, that's where we went.
He would. A extra floor, what about?
We copied that from the town of St. Alton's, the four stories or sixty. And then they can go up to five, so then they can get their fifth floor if they're permanently affordable housing. Say someone comes in and buys two acres, then the growth center. And they wanna build, you know, one of those, you know, Champlain Housing Trust wants to build a five story apartment building, they could, yeah. Even though already it's a six floor.
And did you, did you read the minutes from Catherine Dimitri, Dimitri and the changes to Southern Grove?
No, because from their meeting?
Yes.
I still walked out like, damn, you know.
Uh. You gotta have sidewalks.
So the, the state is not gonna consider that.
It won't get the, it won't get out of Act two fifty.
Without, well, that's regional, when I was on regional, they were sidewalk, sidewalk, sidewalk.
But they won't make that, they won't make that from the housing.
No, it's a state law, that part, no, it isn't.
No, it is.
Law, that's part of the, the changes they made to Act two fifty.
But I think. That's just Catherine, it's Catherine.
Do you think that's, well, I, you know, I did ask her, so what if, I mean, what if we propose a development and it's gonna, you know, show the sidewalk?
When was that, December third?
What?
What did she call?
The state. Last meeting, no, yeah, no, the one before, you're right, December third.
The state of Vermont does not require sidewalks for any.
She was saying.
It's part of her regional plan that she wants, she wants sidewalks everywhere.
No, it wasn't that one.
It wasn't the the first one in December?
It 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 is, but when I was on regional and we were on a policy project review, it was. Sidewalk, and and it's like, it's like. Handies, you you. They put sidewalks in front of handy Chevy G M C that are not gonna get used and honestly, those sidewalks are gonna be trashed by the time they actually get used. So it would have been better off to put any money into a key, you know, a fund.
So we have.
To to build sidewalks where they could be used and have someone else pay for those sidewalks in twenty years when, you know, it just.
So when I was at the town of St. Alton's, I I had this fight with Catherine. Similar to them both, when they're building a new boat can building or new car, whatever it is, they have to build sidewalks up there.
Yeah.
And we said, we don't want sidewalks up there, cause I don't, we want them on Main Street, can they give us the hundred fifty thousand dollars it costs to build sidewalks?
The sidewalks are not cheap.
Because basically, if Handy G M C had built sidewalks across the road. Walmart would already be connected to the Price Shop.
Yeah.
And if you get out a new car, well, then it was built back into the city, well, the city and town are trying to figure out how to build this three million dollar sidewalk. If you just let the developers put the money into a fund, get your sidewalk bill where you want it, um I think that's a Catherine thing more than.
Well, what she said was uh, there's certain uh, you can void Act two fifty. If you have certain things, and sidewalks was supposedly one of, that's what she said, that.
I void Act two fifty as long as.
It's as long as this is a designated growth area or whatever, a couple other areas, I guess, village designated, but I. Southern Grove district would qualify, I guess.
If we had sidewalks in there, already in a development, someone was building.
If we. Yeah. It could be part of the development, as long as the money was there to do it.
Now it makes, that makes more sense.
Now, the other factor that would have rounded that was if they went with the P U D there. Then you can get away with, I believe, with.
Well, they should build twenty four housing units and you don't need to go to Act two fifty right now either.
Well, no, but I'm just saying that.
It's twenty four now?
Uh, I agree, yeah, if the growth center can go up to seventy five, so to get that level of clearance out of Act two fifty, you might have to build a sidewalk at that level.
But up to seventy five units in one. In a growth center.
Go Act two fifty.
So that's how Richard coming to.
She said, ba- basically, the important thing is the area of Swan currently doesn't, the Southern Grove will not qualify as a growth area. Under the new frameworks.
What?
Because of the sidewalk issue.
Because we don't have sidewalks now?
Don't have sidewalks.
Because of blockability, or there's not a rail trail that can exit, or sidewalks, it's a block road.
There is a rail trail and she said we couldn't use that. I asked a question specifically because who the hell walk the walk, you know, through that interstate chain?
Because it's, it's all of this.
You you know. You you know who you guys need to talk about this, and I'll do some research, but if you can get her to come in at some point, and she's doing her job, Sarah Hat, yeah, she was the tech.
She's part of the new Act.
She's the new board that's gonna oversee all that Act two fifty stuff. I'm pretty sure the rail trail was qualified because again, it doesn't have to be a traditional sidewalk, quite competitive.
Yeah, but it doesn't border.
Yes, it does. But the back to that, the back end of it, it's right here.
How much of it?
Looking back across there and through Saint Pierre's land, it's right there.
It can it to right down under the interstate to uh.
Three thousand. Oh, because it goes all the way up to two oh, yeah, or one oh five hours.
Yeah. Yeah.
That's right. I would.
Well, maybe we need to build a path to it.
To it, yeah.
Which.
Which you probably could get.
Oh, we already, I already have a dirt road.
Yeah, wow, even if you made the road, you could, you know, make a little section on the extra section on that.
What is, that's um, what do they call that road?
Uh. Cholon Road.
Cholon. It's Cholon crosses and gets a left.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
But there was one other question I had, uh. In that Southern Grove district, you're not gonna allow any manufacturing from what I can understand what we didn't miss, unless I misread it, cause that's, you know.
No, we, that is, that is not built for. Manufacturing at this point.
It would've been conditional.
I don't think it is.
I really.
We we did change.
Yeah, I mean, you. That's what I was looking at.
Then if you want us to put manufacturing there, we. Could, we could do like light industry or.
Yes, uh green technology.
You want, you want another beta out there, don't you?
Great, well, I think we're gonna go that way to some extent, you know, in the future, so. And we don't have a lot of places, we probably got seven, supposedly seven lots here in Swan that could be used for that purpose right now. But uh that location is is better than some of these lots we have here.
But we need sewer.
Yeah, that's, we'd have to work on that, but if you don't put it in there as a possibility, then.
Oh, you're right.
It's not gonna happen.
No, I would say, um, what do we? What are your thoughts on that, Jim?
I don't know, that's what I was thinking about.
I can see a real tenant.
The idea that it's kind of a residential, doesn't work on anything right now, because everything else, they're fairly close to all kinds of. pharmacies, stores, grocery, basic type of thing.
Oh, it's good for that, at least.
Up to club then.
If you got people, they gotta have a place to work, we're looking at, I'm looking at it from a sustainable standpoint. Uh, you know, you know, people don't, maybe we can have decent enough jobs in this area, they won't have to travel to Brooklyn.
Well, and the other thing we gotta think about doing it, it's kind of been out of our control. Is we're looking at two fairly large industrial. Facilities going in there, one already and one potentially in the near future, that's. It's not industrial, it's not manufacturing, but like, let's face it, it's not retail either.
Yeah.
Like the state garage and everything, so.
Yeah.
Not that we.
Yeah, they they don't take any sidewalk, I raised that growth center.
I love it, so we love taking, my mans.
Yeah.
Took in all of mine, and see there, already they're going in, you've got the, they have a garage down in there and the.
Yeah.
Oh, I know, fifty-eight acres have gone off, yeah, okay, already.
Yep. Yep.
But there's still quite a bit of land out there.
There's a lot of way in there.
Oh, yeah. And Richard.
And there's land on the other side, and there's, then there's land, you know, the Hubbard land.
David, David still has it.
David and Saint Pierre.
A lot of Saint Pierre's is wet, we don't know.
No, not that much. And because it's prior reverted land.
So I'm I'm reading the town growth center designation on the close-up table, which I assume it is. Or might not be, but what comes up on the state's website, sidewalks are not required. Just have that public transportation. It's not required, there. There might be a new thing coming up, but, um.
She said it was obtained to Act one eighty-one.
Yeah, that's what it was, one eighty-one.
So. The big map still in yellow, huh? They're all good. Cause that, that, well, you can't see anything on that one.
Where's your class?
By law. Just know what we're talking about.
Get through with that, like that.
Unproven, next in a row.
You got a question, yeah, it does, so.
So, yeah, with this update, does it talk about people parking?
Uh, we didn't eliminate. In front of the link part four.
You didn't eliminate it?
We did lower the not, minimum number of.
We went, went up to Saks Prairie, the state required lower to park parking unit, we probably require at most. One and a half parking spots per unit, or if they're within a quarter mile of public parking. They won, but we did say where it had to go, because some people might, because of lot coverage to build up behind a building.
My question is, like. I I have a place in the village, and whenever somebody decides to have a party, they think that my property is. Parking spot, you know, works the road, all on my property, so is there something in there that covers that?
No.
Unless there was an ordinance like they did here a few years ago.
There used to be an ordinance in the village, I just think, I think I still have a copy of it on my computer.
Yeah, that'd be, that's what we've done, so we, we only regulate permanent. Parking spots, and there's nothing against putting a permanent parking spot in front of a building, between the road and the building, in this, some towns do outlaw that. Because they want the green belt, but again, we went to the lot coverage thing of like.
I just got lot covered.
You know. Now, some of the parking on grass would be more of an ordinance thing than this, and the city of St. Albans doesn't allow you to park on your lawn if you're having a party.
Right.
And someone pulls on the lawn.
Yeah, parking down something like that.
That would be.
The, the only problem with that. Is then it becomes a, um. Not a management, but a enforcement issue that we're already struggling, and I, and I know it's not. It's not the PD and it's not, not the slagboard, but just that overall enforcement, yes, it would give you some teeth, but. Then you gotta get someone out there and get them to move too, you know, and if that's the. I mean, we can do something, St. Albans has, has the parking people to manage that type of stuff.
Mean means.
The, exactly, that's the only issue with something like that, if you put that in place, that'll be a additional requirement too, you know, like you could, uh.
Could be.
You could make something, uh, to make money at.
Yeah.
Same time.
Yeah, but don't do those tickets come back to the town or do they stay?
It could come to the village, uh, with.
Earl, the other thing I just wanted to mention before I forgot, and we were gonna look into, did, did you ever have a chance to look in, so our Southern Grove has a big radius in it. As a wellhead protect, my understanding from a long time ago was that was based around a wellhead protection for. The trailer park on Bushy Road. You know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, yeah, I believe it was, but that goes back ways.
That goes back a long ways, and if there's going to be public water potentially within that district.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And or if their water supply has all, at all changed, when did that, when did you guys do the Southern Grove District? Was that in the nineties?
It was early two thousand.
Early two thousand?
Yeah.
Okay.
Believe Dick Thompson was still here.
You're a veteran for that.
No, it was after, just after I got off the select board.
Cause I got on, I got on this board in like twenty-ten or twenty-eleven, and it's been here a long time.
Well, I'll probably hadn't been there eight or nine years, you know.
I think my mom was around.
That's a long time, when you're young, it's a long time, but eight or nine years, it was.
Eight or nine hours.
I I didn't, I didn't find anything to change it, but we can search again.
So. I think, and it may not be something for this round. But you go look at the property lines in that arc that goes through a lot of, if you say farmland.
Well, the problem is.
If we can at all move that growth district and infill that big radius that is missing out of it.
The the issue is, is how many people are hooked onto that well, I think, I remember doing my research now, because it's, I can't count the number, but so many are hooked on it, it becomes a public water supply. And so I think public water supplies need different, maybe it's in like my way, your way.
But I mean, what is that radius stopping, like, is it stopping the introduction of a new sewer system? If that's the case, and potentially the guard base is gonna bring in potentially a sewer, public sewer. Into that, into that area, does that mean then, if if people like Richard Cummings can start tapping into that sewer system?
I would hope so, that's a tough.
Does our growth district then go, you know what I mean, do we think about? I'm not saying we wanna expand it to the north, but maybe it can be.
You're gonna have limitations on what you spend that.
They don't give you to expand it for these, because they sold everything in the.
Yep.
And then there's a lot that's in the land trust too, if you start going head and down, but you rode back or.
Two things.
Jump or both farms all of them, in, main.
Yeah, yeah, yep.
So maybe that.
So you're women, basically, you're already women in what you can do, and I don't know how much of it affect that.
Where you.
Most, most of left of Southern Grove, if it's walking up the Highgate Road.
Yep.
To, uh.
The Hodgebumps.
Uh, yeah.
Hodgebumps, it's somewhere near.
Yeah, I do, but I mean, there's not, who owns the fields behind? Hodgebumps, is that his? That, all that, back to the interstate and that?
Yeah.
Yes.
That land is not the land trust, and it has other farm, a little farm farm is it.
No.
I don't know about the Rainville Farm, and I'm not sure on what used to be the Tart Farm.
I don't think they're.
Well, I don't know, man, either.
Neither, neither one of those are in land trust.
Yeah.
Yeah, one of, all of, I have overs and I have all of those, it's all.
All right, that's good, you can verify that.
We already, we already own one of them.
Is what about Raymond Tardis?
He is in land trust.
He is?
If if he's not, he's in the process right now.
Okay, all right, so if that's where it starts, what about, and your Influt Farm, you guys have that now, and that's not in the land trust either, right?
No, so, um, our farm on Bushy Road is in the land trust, and then, uh, Wesley Decker's farm is in land trust. And then, uh, Tardis would be, uh, Jeff Hubbard is, that Saint Pierre owns now is, uh, is not that they're building on, but both sides of that are.
That's who's building on Saint Pierre?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm, I, I wasn't sure. And and that is a thing, I know we've talked about it in the past. It's not a bad thing, having fifty percent of our town being, you know, in land trust or in federal public lands. But it's also gonna handicap us, at some, not handicap us, but at some point, it's going to, we're gonna feel that pitch, you know, um.
Yeah. You take your life with that land over there, in the Southern Grove District area, you left with some land along Route seven, a lot of that's getting developed, so.
Yeah.
But just again, you know, I mean, you're not gonna see much down my way, for sure, you're not gonna see middle of county road, uh.
That's all, no, they're not gonna give that up.
And it's.
It's all answers.
Yeah.
Even if they get in on the middle, uh, Middle Road.
On the right.
That's state, is that state?
That's the state, they bought that, added it to the.
Wetland?
Yeah.
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 And then, uh.
Uh, the best land in your town's already conserved.
You know who's got a chunk?
Wow, the best land is the, the former Big Old Park.
You get like.
Is that in land trust? Yeah, Bordeaux's.
Uh, I think, yeah, it was, Carol and the boys put it in, it was a tough decision, but, you know.
They tried buying someone out of him.
Yeah.
But you know who's not?
Gaston Yando, I don't believe in him.
No, and, um.
You can pull up the Vermont land map.
Um. Yando.
Gaston, Gaston sold his farm to Bordeaux's, didn't he?
I think so, yeah, but I think.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
You like that happened?
Couple years ago.
I don't think, I don't think Yando's on the corner of County or James and Giroux, where, I don't think Yando's is in.
Yando's is not.
Yeah. So there's a, there's a chunk of land there, um.
James Road and what?
Yeah.
Giroux.
So all the green here is land trusted.
If you, uh, you can zoom in and see the street.
Yeah. You follow.
Pretty much all of County and Middle Road.
All right, my help too.
Car shop's pretty much all done.
That's now, um.
Like, this is all like good, uh, this is a city, that's a town, so this, this would be good lots to build on, because you're coastal like, and people would love to just see across.
And that's all, um, Friends, Friends is.
Yeah. Well, this is pretty much all done. But it is, you know.
Wait, go back now. James and what is that, zoom in where it says James, oh, yeah, that's the log, right there, that corner of Giroux, that is all.
At Yando's.
Yeah, like, no, to the left. Right, that is Yando's, and then across the road is mine, where it says Giroux.
All right.
That, yeah, that's my shit beach. Yep.
So I mean, there, there's land, but there's not your growth.
One out there, now what is, those must be houses down on McQuong, that little bit, that must be like, um, what's his name?
Yeah, this is everything.
They, um.
Bonk.
Is that?
Yeah, I'll say that.
Bonk is on the corner of James.
Yeah, that's.
This is James right here.
So that's, uh, the roofer there, Valancourt's and Alton John's old house and all of that stuff, is that open? Chunk.
And then you, then you get out to here. And this is just, you know, this is, this is all conserved.
Yeah, it's.
Yeah, cause it's the fed land, yeah.
Yeah.
So you really got, you gotta do your growing, I mean, this is quarry. It's tight.
Bouches.
They just probably.
Honda.
Here, yeah, that, here's where you guys are.
Yeah.
That was happening in that, that corridor, now the.
Honda's.
To you, to his point, though, your growth center is.
Yeah.
Kind of contained.
Yeah.
Right there.
Yeah, cause you got.
Right there.
All land trust on the backside.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd like to see an overlay of that.
You basically are encircled.
I'd like to see that, how that, uh, land trust, or how our Southern Grove overlay to the land trust right there.
Yeah, you're gonna get that overlay to match up with regional, and I don't know if anybody's done that, I mean, I brought it up with the re- to the regional planning mission. When they were updating their plan, and has that been finished, hasn't it?
I don't know, it might be.
You know, that the, and they seem to be thinking that, yes, it was gonna match up with what we're talking about.
No, good question.
Yeah.
Now, the land trust, when that first started, wasn't there an agreement if land was, if land came to be. Not available, that they were gonna open that up to make lots along the road?
You can buy it back out, but it's not peaceful.
Buy it back out. I don't think you can, uh, enact Congress, because a lot of it is federal, you need to do it, and so you're gonna need Congress to give up its right on your easement, and. We, we went to this project and tried to build a power line, Northeast came in with another client mine, and literally it was gonna take an act of Congress to do. We're the only state that did permanent land conservation, most states do like twenty, thirty, forty, fifty year easements. One, so that another generation gets a bite of the apple to get some money, the problem with Vermont's, and this is just me speaking off the hand, two generations from now.
Nobody's gonna have.
Nobody can get money, money got given once.
Right. The land's still overpriced to actually buy for farming, for a young person to start.
Yeah. Yeah. It was meant to help a young person buy a farm and sell the development rights, so they can get the down payment with the farm.
Yeah.
And it should be a thirty year, because my grandparents had a farm in upstate New York, and my uncles now have the farm, and I think they get a bite of the apple in another couple of years, cause it's turning up. They can either develop, or they can sell it for another thirty years, and it's not as much money as people in Vermont make on, when they sell that easement, but. You don't get that money again.
It's expensive.
And Vermont now. Has a goal of having the whole state be fifty percent conserved.
Where are we at?
Uh, somewhere in like twenty-five or. The town's like, in some town, and it is the hard part, right, cause like, we all make decisions that are forever, but maybe so, like Montgomery wants to basically.
Earl, you didn't even know your eighty U's on farms?
They're getting some assets.
Could you bring up the eighty U of farms?
No generations, it's a, no generation's something.
Eighty U's on farms, got a question about that?
On farms?
You said that you didn't think two was enough.
Accessory.
Oh, that's right, yeah, for accessory cows and, but, I mean, it's not a major issue here in Swan, but I expect it could be someday that everybody would, somebody would own all the land on.
Some would.
Be milking two or three thousand cow out there, and they would need several accessory.
Can I make a comment to add, Earl?
Yeah.
On the accessory going, personally, I would think they wanna go back and subdivide out an acre and put a house on it. Or a double, why, you're aware they could put on it, so that eventually, if they went out of agriculture, it's already to sell.
I know, but they ain't gonna do it, uh, because it's gonna cost them more money.
Well.
The, the problem with that too is.
Subdivision out of there isn't gonna cost them that much money, you still gotta put water, sewer.
The problem with that is, is if you're in land trust, you can't subdivide it out.
Uh, no, that, if you're in land trust, I agree, yeah.
But if you're in land trust and you have a homestead out of the land trust, you can build the accessory units on that, but you still cannot subdivide them out.
That's right.
So they become a part of that, they become.
Yeah. Good point, good point, a lot of that land is in land trust now, so if there's anything done there, it's gonna have to follow old regulation. I don't know, it's something to consider, you know, because right now, I, I, I don't see it as being a major issue here in Swan, uh, we have a couple bigger farms, uh. But they're not beating what Saint Pierre types like, they're.
But my assumption, and I'm just thinking out loud. A farm, let's take for an example, like Larry Bordeaux's, the house must be not part of the trust.
Usually that's out there, there's a building envelope, or whatever they call it.
That. Right, so what I'm getting at is if that, I'm assuming like Friends has a chunk that's out, there's a couple trailers across the road at Friends, like. I'm this, if a farmer owned four or five of those farms, he would have four or five locations around that he could potentially either put a new, new structure on it.
Here's what, here's what's gonna happen, this is the reality, he's not gonna be.
Spread out.
Milking in this barn and that.
And he doesn't want the help to have.
There's only one major facility, they may use the other ones for, but, uh, you know, great cows and everything, uh, you're still gonna, if ever it happened, but I mean, it's not a urgent, real urgent issue, but.
He doesn't want.
It's, I can see, and with this land trust issue, uh, you know, you can't, you can't subdivide, you can't build on, you've gotta build an area. Land trust will let you build agricultural facilities or houses for help, but you cannot subdivide it separate.
That's right, but if we weren't in the land trust, as a farmer, you might better subdivide it for the future.
They usually don't like spending their money.
No, they wouldn't rather spend yours, though.
And it comes up afterwards, you're right, it comes up, there's a lot, there's probably thirty, forty of them around Swan right now that are gonna end up, you happen to get something divided out. Or already have, that would build as accessory buildings, you know, over the years.
Mm-hmm.
No, more.
No. But it's just one of the, one of the thoughts I had, and I, but I wanna go back, because I do feel that. We should allow some manufacturing in that Southern Grove District, I really do think it should be.
You want like. Do you want like? Light manufacturing or like?
What's the definition of?
Light manufacturing is like Maple City, you can't run the candy place where you're.
Yeah.
Directly manufacturing.
But I mean, that, in my head, that's what it is, is that how it's defined? But that's what I'm getting, like.
Have you really read that, Earl?
What?
That Southern Grove District with what's. Conditional use in there?
Yeah, I have.
I mean, you got everything from conference center to childcare, bread and breakfast banks.
I know.
Uh.
Most of that probably gonna occur close to the interstate, there's some land out back that might be.
I don't think there's too much left out that's out back.
They'll have practice supply, you could put.
Yeah.
You could put a.
Maybe down there, but even on Montang, so I think.
That, that Montang farm is two hundred acres, if they've used forty something, there's still a lot left there.
Yeah. Yeah, and that's.
Two hundred before the state armory?
It was two.
It's, it's two hundred acres before they did anything.
Yeah. Fifty-eight acre gap.
But then you remember too that uh David Hubbard, David Hubbard owns, I think, forty acres on the other side of the road.
Yeah.
Of the Shoalan Road.
Yeah.
And then Saint Pierre owns a chunk that butts up there against Cummings, or maybe it's Cummings, I think, I think Mark has a piece in the middle.
A chunk back there too.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I think Mark owns a chunk between, between the two of them.
That would be, if we were to put manufacturing somewhere, I would say down behind the tractor supply.
Well.
Down in that.
If you wanted to do it that way, that's fine.
Because it doesn't, those buildings aren't gonna look any different than the storage building that Total Home Center has out in the back.
Right.
Same concept.
I mean, that, uh, uh, that's a good, good way of doing it, I think it needs to be that area because of the location. And might, you know, it might be attractive enough, I know we need water and sewer here, but, but.
What was that?
So we don't define anywhere near light manufacturing, other towns do, we just have manufacturing.
So no restriction?
No, we don't define a difference between heavy manufacturing and light manufacturing.
But if you're gonna restrict it to that one side of the road, then I don't.
We have to draw up a district to do that.
Yeah, we don't, we don't wanna. I'm just. Thinking about it visually. So there is a chunk, the Saint, Saint Pierre is between Hubbard's and.
Yeah. He does have a jump there, he used to be part of Jimmy's over there.
It's a good map.
Well.
Yeah, I got, I got, I got like property lines. On X.
Eighty, eight, eight running?
Yeah, I mean, I think maybe.
You made more edits than thousands around, so something might have been addressed, please.
Well, I am a little more than.
Yeah, thanks for coming, appreciate it.
My personal feeling. If you want setbacks, let's out in the R one district or outside of the. Village here, outside of water and septic, I think we should be down in the neighborhood twenty-five feet or max. Thirty feet.
I am not sure that, that was.
That's.
I would, I would, that's you guys' decision, I would base that off roads.
Huh?
I would base that off roads. Twenty-five, thirty feet on Route seven?
Well, your front's different than your sides.
No, I'm going to side setback.
Oh, sides, I thought you said front.
Side setback, no.
I thought we went, I thought we went to thirty-five.
No, you're on fifty.
We're still at fifty?
Oh, yeah.
Yes. If you bring in a hundred and fifty. And you can only do, they got fifty feet to build.
So we go there fifty, and my feeling is.
We didn't think about that.
My, my feeling.
Change it.
Yeah, Jim talked about that a little bit.
Get that down to, well, I'd add that down personally twenty-five.
Yeah, no, I think already.
I think I think I'm a hundred feet in the middle.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't touch this.
And then. Cause a hundred feet, a house and a garage could be a hundred feet, could be a hundred feet long.
Yeah, and if you got, you know, if you gotta put one in a little shed, then if you got something else you wanna store or off and out.
And then be able to drive around it all the time.
Yeah.
I ran into that problem a lot. You know, and we really go rural housing district.
We wanna go to what, twenty-five on size?
I'd recommend it.
I'm fine with it.
What about your?
I, I think the rear could be the same.
It's just the front.
No, I, I wouldn't worry, well, yeah, the rear would be same.
Twenty-five, 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 and then the front stay fifty.
That's right.
And leave the front the same.
Yep.
Leave the front, whatever you've got to set.
Except everybody off the road.
Yeah.
Well, the only thing I thought of when, I thought you were talking front was. And I'm just thinking out loud, I don't really, there's no slow traffic type in the bris, but there isn't. Roads. To even allow people kinda creep towards, towards the road for a skinny law, where my brain goes on a skinny law. Is. You might not have been here, but. Hill. Um. What's her name, Lucy, Lucy's low down on the wrong door, that's a skinny bacon strip going in the wrong direction. So that fifty foot setback really would jack up a lot like that. Um, and I'm not saying there's a lot of those, but with that fif- with that hundred and fifty foot depth we're allowing. What does that, if, if the law is only a hundred and fifty feet deep, what does that mean, what's the length of the law, it's gonna be a long skinny.
Hundred fifty feet of road.
Hundred ninety.
It would be two ninety, if, if it's only one fifty deep, it'd be two ninety wide.
Yeah, two ninety, not two ninety.
Two ninety deep.
So then if it's one fifty deep, it's two ninety wide.
That's right, yeah.
But you have made a, a change in here to allow for pre-existing. Non-performing laws or however you want to say it. Because you're not gonna let anybody create a law.
No. Well, we're gonna let them create a law one fifty by two ninety.
Yeah. Okay, it's, it, yeah, but it, but that means our requirements.
Correct.
Okay. But the, the thing that I've seen in here when I was reading it, I think that is important to pre-existing small laws.
Yeah, that's state statute, that's only it. State, state, state statute, it's already in existence, there's a law, we have to allow single-family homeowners that can accept it.
I know, but you changed the setbacks, you saw that the zoning administrator probably can do. A permit now, they'll have probably before the zoning.
Yeah, that was the law.
You know, because the zoning board adjustment has no choice but to do it. So.
Why, it just makes work for them.
Yeah.
No.
So we're trying to.
It's a waste of the property owner's money.
Yeah.
My ass.
Yeah, it is. And it wastes everybody's time.
We can't do this, can't do that, it's just, yeah.
But that, that is addressed this time.
We did, we, we tried to do a lot of.
We've been. We didn't, I don't think we got everything, Earl.
No.
We, we.
Well, I'm just thinking some of the things that have come up.
No.
Were controversial.
Well, and the thing too now is as things come up, you guys can come in, you don't have to do a big rewrite, you. Once a year, a lot of towns have a list and they come in for two, three months of plaintiffs and said, this was an issue last year, this was an issue, this was an issue. How do we wanna fix them, do we wanna fix them, and then you make small changes and then you move on.
And that's where my brain went, we're gonna have some tweaks, and like Corey said, the state's gonna make some changes. And then I knew that the fees were something we talked about, and we had talked about that, and Amy, we were supposed to have a conversation, obviously. So those are a couple things that I think i- if we can, wait until maybe Amy or we can. I, I don't wanna get lost in the weeds on that stuff, trying to really finish up some of the stuff, if, if that makes sense.
Well, let's go back to manufacturing.
I mean. What are your thoughts on manufacturing?
I mean, we get like, if you wanna get more opinions, I know.
I don't quite agree with it.
Yeah, it might, I just hate that not have. A sustainable.
But I think there's all other areas for manufacturing. Where they're gonna be.
Gone up by the interstate, yeah.
No, you're gonna, there're gonna be transportation, you know, out, uh, this type of thing, parking lots.
Well, they do have it there, they got the interstate right here, that's a big thing.
They got the interstate right there, but there's not much left.
There's enough left.
The other, the other thing I, I agree with Earl on is. If we wanna pay for these big water and sewer projects or the roads. It's gonna take manufacturing for, to get that money, I mean, retail can do some, but there's more money in the manufacturing side than I think than in the retail. And it's a long-term thing, you know, with, with jobs.
The only two ways we're gonna get outside money right now, that may happen, I'm not saying it could happen. It would be housing, cause that's a big thing, or job creation. And, you know, otherwise this thing is gonna go on. Uh, there is water up there and Cummings Development will be hooked onto the water. You got, you're gonna stay on cause they approved it. But they built a sewer and, you know, what, what's gonna bring the sewer, they're gonna need actually fifty.
That's true, well, and the other, here's what I'm thinking, how many retail businesses out there? Put in the infrastructure and build a building like practice provided? Not a lot of them.
No.
A lot of those retail businesses are looking for. An existing. Building with retail space to come in and walk in and.
You're probably gonna see most of your retail activity happen in the old high-income.
Yeah.
And, and so where my brain goes is if anybody's gonna walk in and actually build a building. It's gonna be a Vermont position tools. Or, or something that I have a fact that's gonna build a building.
Well, I, it could, the only, the only other thing that I would hope would happen, I'm gonna be honest with you, is that there'd be smaller businesses like the, the car shop. So somebody very, radiator. Hydraulic motor repair, uh, we don't have nothing around here. You gotta go a long ways, you know, we could have, those type of small independently owned businesses. Uh, that's.
Cause what do you see, where do they consider?
Well, we don't really have that. Going in there, we got the uh. Coming up Bushy Road.
Kanye's coffee shop.
We got Kanye's there, that type of bit, that's a whole.
Yeah, yeah. Right, yeah, but I don't see big retail right now moving, you know.
No, I don't think you'll see.
Well, not through online.
There, but I'm wondering, when you talk about manufacturing. You would be there, manufacturing, you would be looking for probably anywhere from.
Oh, I am still talking that, I'm still talking that, I, I, cause I think there, there would be some interest in that area if there was municipal services. Uh, just.
And they, they might have the cash to bring in those municipal.
Or they might be able to help us leverage the money to bring in.
What was the conditions on what Saint Orleans would be released as far as water?
Well, we haven't had that discussion, but they, but the last talk we had with Saint Orleans City about this. Was they're open to discussions now, because they made an agreement with Saint Orleans Town. So now they know what they have in excess of the old.
I see. Until then, they were kinda up in the air, how much of the town want, where do they want, where do they take?
Now, that doesn't, you know, what's the conditions, you know, what's.
Now, we need somebody to pay affiliation.
Well, they actually, they were talking about inclusion.
So you know, you're good with manufacturing in there, you can put manufacturing in there, no more than. Trial and error, go through with it, they just bring in the right, or they may pay to bring.
Well, that's, I'm gonna tell you this now, the state is going to have a very debate, a very sizable expansion of water, a sort of construction for housing on this ship. N- north of, of all, park of fifty million dollars, throughout these values, I think, building housing. Part of that happened to a lobbyist working on it. Might outlaw towns from denying water to our allocations to the dangers. Because.
Yeah.
It is such a need, they can't shut down regional growth. Because you happen to get that.
Especially with it being difficult to put in.
Yeah.
Any sort of municipal. Sewer service.
You can't build, you guys can't build treatments, so you want. Also, the state can't say, we got this fifty million dollars and have it be held up. By a town saying, we gotta pay for thirty percent of our fleet department in order to give you access, but I guess.
But you put a conditional use. And make some more work for the DRB.
It can a lot of way.
Go away, like you.
Yeah.
Give me a bro. You can put a conditional use, and then you're gonna see how many applications you get.
Yeah.
I'm curious how many people, I mean, and I know, I don't know about now, but I can think back to a couple years ago when, you know, Elizabeth would be like, oh, we had so and so. A couple people knocking on the door. If someone was to walk in the door and say, well, our Southern Grove District does allow manufacturing now, would that be like, oh, there's another part of town? Now, the one not downfall is. We're, it's not that we're. Putting something in that's not using our services, but obviously, if we want growth. We want them to be using the services that are gonna benefit us to, to a certain extent, so by allowing that growth there, is it going to? Shoot, shoot the village services in the foot, meaning power, sewer, water.
Oh, power. I, I, what, that is swamp power, I know David Hubbard is. David Hubbard is on swamp power.
But yeah, Southern Grove is?
David Hubbard is on swamp village.
Swamp Village Power goes all the way to the, the tractor supply to these, I think Andy's is even on swamp power.
Yeah. Yeah, the power is there.
This great mountain power services right up through the, on the junction.
Yeah, but they don't, um, two oh seven, I think they go, I don't know.
I didn't know where he's been going, I know that. They, uh, when you get over on Woodsdale Road, yes.
Yes, that's why I'm saying David Hubbard, I know is swamp village.
And, and the other thing is, is not only is that swamp, but that is three-phase power as well on two oh seven.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, you're right on that.
Yeah.
What do you think?
Three-phase.
Three-phase.
Let's get to.
So, I mean, we.
Molly, what do you think?
I just don't see why we wouldn't put it in there, I mean, uh, it's not like, you know, there's not twenty people knocking on the door that want it, but there's nobody that's saying no, so. I think it's, it's at least have it as a conditional use, and if somebody wants it, then we, we address it then, but I, I mean. If somebody showed up tomorrow and wanted to put manufacturing in there, I'd have a hard time telling them no.
Got your socks or something?
Yeah, some, you know, I mean, or maybe computer chips, who the hell knows, you know, it might be.
So like, I, I think technically like what Doug Corey does is considered like.
Yeah.
So you not wanna get somebody there to build and write their T-shirts and.
Yeah.
Stuff like that.
I mean, Saint Orleans, uh, uh, the, uh, Saint Orleans Industrial Park only, like, last time I talked to Ken, they've got one lot out there.
You said they had eight or nine empty lots, so like, none of us here.
Down the. And swamp maybe.
Oh, by the.
Oh, it's swamp.
Oh, I'm talking about Saint Orleans Town. Near industrial park.
But I like funny, he has his whole one in his entire career there. Imperious is in North. All of this.
Fair.
We built a speech facility.
Huge there, I saw that.
We couldn't sell them here in the plant that already happened.
Uh, I, I, you know, none of this may never happen, but Mary Cross and Charles, I think it should be in there too.
Yeah.
Yeah, I believe in their other.
But it is a conditional use.
We don't hurt anything in there.
No.
No, we're gonna find out.
No, I'm glad you.
And one other thing I wanna bring up too, and I was looking in there, you've got references when it comes to these uh building roads that might, the town might take over. Uh, are you aware of the town has adopted a policy?
We talked about, there, there was a conversation about this.
So it should be mentioned in here, but I think that's, you know, should be in here clear, so. When they come to get a permit for P and D or whatever, they're building this road and, you know. Here, if you're gonna think about, if the town's taking it over, now, here's the conditions.
Before you get your permits.
That's right.
You will. Get clearance from.
Yeah.
Well, that's another conversation we, and we.
I, you know, cause our friends developer, no, fans cares if he turns it over the road or not, cause he's gonna build six homes on it, turn over to an association.
And then.
Put the association fifteen years later when they gotta repay the damn thing, reach out to the town saying, hey, why don't you take over our road?
Or they don't even pay them to begin.
So I actually have a, I have a question on that for Earl when we're on the topic, that he can bring back to the select board is. The town, we need to do something with enforcement of these things, because we've discussed the project in our last few meetings. That's, in my opinion, just. Slapping the town in the face with their fixes to what were issues. And that, quite frankly, we can make all these bylaws and spend a lot of time and effort on it and money that we're paying somebody like Corey. But if we're not gonna, you know, enforce these. We're kinda wasting our time, and that's, I mean, it's not something that's gonna immediately happen, but there, there needs to be a discussion. To form a, a body of people. Of throughout the town that are in charge of enforcing different things. Um, to ensure that. Everybody's work is actually being, uh, used.
Are you specific to how they build in roads, is that what you're?
Not just building roads.
Not just building roads, that was what we talked about, uh, most recently was a development that had a, a cul-de-sac that was out of. Um. Spec and, and when they were. Um spec and and when they were told to correct it, they just dumped stone on top of dirt, you know, there's no fabric, there's not even. Six inches of stone. And that was their fix, because now if you just look at it, it looks like it ma- matches, but if you scuff your boot in the stone, it it's just dirt underneath it.
Yeah.
And so down the road, when this developer is long gone, and it's a housing association. You know, or God forbid there be a fire and a truck pulls in there and driving, you know, it's wet and where they put stone on top of mud, a fire truck gets stuck. You know, we we, there's reasons why we are putting all these things into place. But right now, we don't have anybody that's enforcing to make sure that they're actually done, you know, I know like um. Uh people are checking, but it's probably not, in my opinion, the right people.
Yeah, I I I that's all the genuine concern, and the thing is, and the other thing that this is gonna be bad about it is when that home association. Comes before the select board and say, we want you to take your road over, and the road, you know, needs thousands of dollars to repair, the board's not gonna do it, that causes a lot of friction.
Oh, yeah.
So do it upfront, I don't know, I definitely we gotta have that discussion with the select board.
Well, and it's not even just about the roads. It there's some other stuff that we've talked about. When it comes to. You know, certificates of occupancy, like really cracking down on some some stuff out there, and and it's not to piss people off, but it's. It can be pretty, as a builder and and knowing and having conversations with Amy and working in other communities. I don't let homeowners move in until it's done, we gotta C O, and and that that's the way it goes, and. People, I think, feel like, and of course, these houses are taking longer to build now, and there's so many, so many things that are stretching them out. But these these roads es- especially like, when we start talking about long roads and pull offs and the cul-de-sacs and doing away with the hammer hammerheads. What's the sense of doing away with a hammerhead if they're putting in a cul-de-sac that's half the size it's supposed to?
Yeah.
You know, so. And having a little bit of teeth. And and like we talked about, it's like. They need a Band-Aid repair on that cul-de-sac, it should not have been given any C Os, even though they were living in the houses. Before they were even given them, and it's like.
Does our zoning bylaws say now that you can deny a C O for this reason? So who's giving the C O?
The zoning administrator.
And but they're not, they're they're not aware of the road issues then.
Oh, yeah.
First of all, number one, when you come right down to it, truthfully. Cul-de-sacs and the road going in.
Could be done for any permission.
Should be an engineer certification.
Yeah.
And it should be a certification that is there before anybody can move into any property on that road.
Or you issue any building permits.
Well, I don't know about issuing a building permit, but at least the, at least.
They need his teeth though.
C O.
Hmm, that's correct.
No, because if they don't have a C O, you can find them, and you can take them to E court, get them out, right?
I guess so, I don't know how the law works, but.
That gets into.
Is that something that we would have to change in these bylaws right now?
Well, our understanding was.
I mean, we'd have to have it, I I agree with you, engineers should have it certified, then there's somebody taking liability.
Just like the roads going up Maple Grove.
Yeah.
That has to be engineered certified, and that's. Again, now, the last extension they put in down there, they build to the center of road, that's another thing that should not be allowed to build any place. The center of the road. Because the problem with the center of the road is, the first house in. Paid for maintenance and has potholes in front of his house because. There's traffic going by pounding living daylights out, and they only come in and go into a driveway. You know, it's the homeowners association's responsibility for that road. And not to the center of the road.
Um you have enforcement, um state law is you can't. Move into a house until you have a this. A C O. Um.
So if the town was gonna, could you put language in there that says, you know?
You don't have to, I don't have to issue a C O until the project is built to whatever they said they were gonna build it to, like if if the grading plan is off. You technically don't have to issue a C O, like, it's just.
Yeah, but I'm thinking, I'm also gonna look from the developer standpoint, okay, I'm I think it's small time to build, it's not big, big money, yeah. Uh alright, they they put it, they they do gotta get the road in, and and they got one house that's ready. If that road, if that engineer comes back and it meets all the specs that's required. Then we could issue him a C O for that first house.
Yeah.
Is that language in our bylaws? Is that, is it a requirement?
They almost phased out that, you know. And so you might not build the whole road right off the bat, but you build to that house and then you extend.
Well, see, we've had this.
But you can't, a lot of developers can't afford to build the whole thing, they gotta, if they're building a twenty home, they're not gonna build that road right off the bat, and that's a bankrupted building mode here.
Here's what happened, he made. Maple Grove. They went up in, so far, put a cul-de-sac in. And finally, they took over the road, he extended it. With the idea and everything else is went on. And went up with another one in, hoping that basically that they were gonna take it over. And they refused to take it over because now we have, what is it, Earl, uh.
Well, we have a.
Retention bonds too.
Stormwater become an issue, and that's what that's. But you brought that up beautifully, but uh that has to, that that's gonna get in here somewheres, I mean.
Stormwater's.
Yeah, stormwater on the P U Ds and developments, you know, they gotta have.
Fifty, that would be.
The laws of fifty in states have anything over a half acre impervious to have the public state law, that being said, you don't have a stormwater utility or other stormwater regulations.
Because they don't, they.
Well, you you don't, in town, you don't, you're not an M S four community, so you're not. You're not, we haven't regulated stormwater, be on what the state requires for development, because then. Then we're opening a wall that can't work.
No, we're all we're, all we're saying in our policy is, before the town will take that road over. The stormwater permits have to be, has to work, has to be done, and the permits have to be in place.
Does that have to be written in the bylaws explicitly, or is that in?
If they expect the town to take over the road in the future, and that's what doesn't guarantee we'll take it over, but if they, that's.
In intended.
And that's getting to be very expensive, we've got about thirty some odd thousand dollars in our budget this year. Trying to deal with an older development, and of course, we, the state doesn't even know how it's supposed to be done, but. It's not cheap, these permits are not cheap.
Coming up from the long times.
And and.
But they have a stormwater utility, they don't, they don't.
I'm trying to understand. The permits are paying for what? The state permits, yeah, the state permits that they're.
Stormwater permits?
Raising funds with.
Stormwater.
Clean up the lake.
There, that's the money they're using to clean up the lake?
It's the cleaner, it's clean part, yeah.
Uh I believe so, yes, I believe that was the idea.
That's a fantasy.
Well, yeah, I don't.
If the way it wouldn't.
No, the permits, the permits pay to the staff. And they regulate these towns, Saint Albans City, Milton, Saint Albans Town, or M S four communities, I'm shocked you're not, to be honest with you. That's why those towns have stormwater utilities, because now they got, like, town of Saint Albans has to do like. Forty million dollars of the stormwater updates, and basically got to retrofit everything back to seventeen sixty-three to have stormwater ponds that would be available today.
But how do you fund this?
Stormwater utilities. So you have a Saint Albans, it's a fee, you join a utility. Because you have impervious surface on your lot. Then you create a standard. It's called E R U. Put a residential units, you take the average of your single family homes in the community, say it's thirty-seven underscore feet or twenty underscore feet of impervious. You apply, if you're on a farm that's twenty-eight thousand, well, farms aren't regulated anymore, but minus the A and R.
Farms are though, is the problem, farms have to pay that tax in Saint Albans, and I think it's ridiculous, because I have.
Well, you know, the state outlawed it two years ago.
I thought Saint Albans was still charging, cause I knew of a couple of big farms that were. Because, and I said it's crazy, because we are stormwater.
So they were allowed and charged up to a date, those farms didn't pay by that date, so they still have to pay for the two years it was legal to them. The charge, the farmers don't wanna pay it. And kind of down, those farms have a tax sale at some point, because you still have to pay for one of the.
Until it was.
So that's a, yeah, that's a a tax on that district.
Well, it's not a tax, they call it fee, because then you can charge it.
Is it a one-time fee?
Annual, it's like the the state of Vermont pays the town of Saint Albans once a hundred thousand dollars a year for the interstate. In those fees, you get to charge the state to the interstate, you get to charge the railroad. You get to charge everybody, and so you create a user fee, the town of Saint Albans is about a half million dollars a year. Doing it, and that's how it's paid for the stormwater.
Well, you said they got forty-one million dollars to spend a half million years, but you know.
Well, they got, you'll get, like this, like the state of Vermont's get a bunch of money. Uh a lot of, there's a lot of grant money, it's like the town uses that money, like when I was there, we got. Uh. A half million dollar grant for a neighborhood, and so the town just paid the hundred thousand dollar twenty percent match. So out of that five hundred thousand, um so you go and get a lot of grant money. The state also like gave Milton seven hundred thousand for stormwater, and there's more money to go out and get.
Alright, but would are are they, are they giving a deadline to the town?
Twenty thirty-six.
Well, twenty thirty-six, it is down the road.
It's not too far though, it's great.
No, that's a federal permit, so it's that. Started back with Richard Nixon and finally came to Vermont twenty years ago.
Well.
You guys will be one someday, it's my.
I guess in in the zoning bylaws, I think that people, developers need to be aware that, you know, there are conditions that so own.
Conditions.
Should reference that maybe?
And then.
You should see them up there, I think.
The other, the other conversation we need to have, and I I know we need to put it somewhat on the developers' heads as well. And it's, it's.
I've got to step in that, I mean, if you want to take notes anymore, it's.
Yeah. Um.
That makes me proud.
Corey, I told him, that's a quick thing to step in on.
I'm planning a project, building Saint Albans City.
Um, he's, he's just going on a Zoom call next to him, um, so. Uh. Is some of that enforcement stuff, Earl, and and and. Uh this isn't about Amy, but I. I think sometimes they might feel they don't have the teeth. And and I think it's not just that, but also when it comes to some of these, we were talking about some of these longer driveways, I think. Corey could tell you, I think it's over. Six hundred fifty feet, he was saying, there's some standards involved there.
They'll grab some of that, yeah.
Those are the. Those are some of those things that we should be potentially having, and I know they do it, but have a formal process. For Kevin to go out and take a look at and make sure, we're not, we're not getting in an issue fight, because. Someone puts in a goat path to a house eight hundred feet in the woods, and we try to get a fire truck there at some point, and it's not, not gonna be a good scene.
Yeah.
So, and and I know that there are costs associated with that, but in the long run. What are we talking? I having Kevin go out and do a little paperwork, if you spend an hour on something like. That's the conversation, I think, we gotta talk about.
I hate to put. That kind of responsibility onto some employee of the town in regards to. Saying a road is meeting a standard or a driveway is meeting a certain standard.
I would only.
We're gonna have a standard, and it's gonna have to be met.
Yes.
Shouldn't be the engineering firm that's making that.
But they meant, they might not have an.
Yeah, but here, here's where I think we, what we could do. Kevin at least would go out there and look at it.
Yeah.
I mean, if it's, like you're talking, it's cul-de-sac deal, like a repaired, that's something needs seen.
I saw it, I pulled in, I know exactly what.
Yes, we need to have the engineers, you know, if the town is gonna do anything with that in the future, that's got to be there.
But I'm not talking, I'm not talking about, I'm talking about, is it three houses or less? They they don't, it's it's still private road?
Once it's three houses, it's a street.
It's a street, three houses.
So two wouldn't be a driveway.
Two, two, but who could be, who could be?
Out, yeah, yeah, out in the woods, yeah.
Two fourplexes.
Yeah, that's right.
That could be eight units on a dirt road or a dirt driveway, right? That does not have an engineer involved. That is not designed by an engineer.
Well, she decided with safety.
Who says?
Huh?
Who would decide that?
You.
No, I'm not.
You're just bored here.
To to think I need to get an engineer involved, the only thing I need is is someone to do my wastewater, and someone to do, potentially do a subdivision, but realistically. You'd need someone to do wastewater, and I could put, I could put a house on my land and and out in um, or put three houses on Giroux Road.
Yeah.
And I don't need to pay a an engineer, I don't need to pay him to certify anything, and I don't need to have a design.
Why don't you need a, Jeffy?
I just said, the only thing I need is wastewater, but I don't need an engineer to tell me what to put into a road. I'm not gonna pay him to do that.
Uh, I don't know, we probably better have that, we better prolong this discussion, that, you know, to the select board. When you do your initial presentation.
Yeah.
Uh before, before the board does the final one, you know, before the select board does the final one.
And I. I think that's a conversation that probably doesn't even get necessarily wrapped up in this, because I think it's a longer term conversation.
Well, where where does the enforcement part of this come in? Is it coming into bylaws? It must be written in the bylaws.
It's already in there.
Okay, so it's, we're gonna have to, it should be in, if we're gonna make changes. And put a protocol in place, and it needs to be in here.
But like, the the whole. Where was it? I think it was Corey's that made the info, where it was. It was in there about that house up there, where when I said, they they should not be. No, it's not, that's too bad, uh i- i- in my opinion, they should have never gotten C O, and we should have found them, and we should have sent letters, cause we didn't.
Yeah.
And and those houses, the house at the end of that cul-de-sac should should have never got anything, because they knew what they. And I think. Some people might have felt that it was maybe not gonna be supported if they did that, I I don't know, but. We can't let that continue, you know what I mean? Like, people just. And and the same goes, and I hate to do it, but I mean, there's a trailer on Route seven, a boat, a camper, been living in for years.
I think you're pointing that out to me.
Years, and there's. Right on Route seven, end of the road.
You can't figure out.
I'll tell you where it is tomorrow, Jim.
Huh?
I'll tell you.
You can see it.
Well, you know where it is, okay.
They've been, as long as I've been coming to work, they've been living.
Well, there's another thing on this, it's just like.
And I'm not saying people aren't, I don't, I just wanna say, I'm not saying people aren't ruining their jobs, I think it's as much. We've never done it, and they don't know how to start doing it, and and the comment Brian said, well, is that like spot, you know, are we, are we being petite, I forget the term being used, but.
Selective enforcement.
Selective enforcement, but.
Yeah, you have to be careful about that.
You've gotta be careful, but if you've never done it, you gotta, how do you start and not be so?
Well, I mean, this is where you start right now, and it's.
You know what I'm saying?
That's where you put the engineer, here's another problem that comes up, there's an example, there's. Jump cars or cars.
Yeah, that's another one.
In your yard, you can only have so many of them.
Two, yeah, two.
I just wanted to.
And two. So you got. Four of them setting up, I can tell you a couple of places. Or three places where they are. Oh, they're registered, I got a plate on.
Well, they are registered.
They require somebody enforcement.
They are not registered, Earl. They have a plate on, but they're not legally registered. Ninety days after the inspection, or the inspection is ninety days old. They're not a legal vehicle.
Yeah, they probably isn't, if you were.
Uh-oh.
Set the water from here.
Yes, Oliver?
Oh, I've got.
My truck hasn't been inspected for two years, so you're telling me it's not legal?
You're a farmer, you do whatever you want anyways.
It's, it's, I I update the registration every year, I just refuse to pay inspection on a brand new vehicle.
So right here, certificates about, in accordance, certificate blah blah blah, occupied structure, da 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 da, an application for. Shall be provided with zoning permit, officer shall submit application and any associated fee. Uh application for submission, I read it, I read it not too long ago. Is that it?
But you're getting hung up on this.
Violations and enforcement, right here.
The point is, the select board needs to come up with a plan to enforce everything in there.
Yeah, but that's what I have, they gotta put the language in there.
Going forward. But I think it's, it's just never been enforced.
It's here. Okay, that's, it's it's here, it's never been enforced.
So there needs to be a day that enforcement starts going forward, it's enforced all the time. Again.
But we're gonna have to do it.
Notice a violation, pursuant to the act, no action may be brought under this section unless alleged offender has had at least seven days notice by certified mail. That a violation exists, warning notice shall state a violation, and the alleged offender has the opportunity to cure the violation seven days. And that alleged offender will not be entitled to an additional warning notice for violation on the seventh day, action may be brought without notice. An opportunity to cure, uh blah blah blah, seven day period, twelve months. Enforcement, civil enforcement. Penalties shall be imposed for initial, second, and subsequent violations of every, any provision of the development regulations in accordance with twenty-four V S A nineteen seventy-four. That's state law, that's what Corey's been changing to make it align to state law. We we can enforce limitations, complaints, it's all right here.
We get the enforcement, the hard part is is the zoning administrator was out.
She's gotta feel, she's gonna be supported, you know, it's what it's what I mean.
And she almost did. And they'll tell you, oh, no, that's all. Been proven. That's the state.
Enforcement is the proving.
Is the proving, so the sheriff's department is the one that should be notified, hey, we want you to go check this, this, and this out. Or the police department, whatever it is. They can say, well, where's your registration? They can say, okay, there's no inspections figured out in this vehicle, it hasn't been for two years or six months or anything.
That's why the police department, that's a good job for. That's what they should do.
I don't have time to go through that.
They used to, the chief used to.
Yep.
But after, uh.
I have an idea for that, Earl, I'll share with you sometime.
Well, anyway, what you're telling me right now is all this stuff is already in there.
But somebody.
Any violation of these bylaws can be enforced via state law. It's in there, it's it's clear, it's clear as day.
Okay, but now we go back to that CO thing, uh.
The thing that isn't in there, that it has, these particular things have to be certified by an engineer.
Yes.
That's what we need to.
I'm gonna get back to that road thing, yeah. And all.
Engineer roads.
Yeah.
BUDs.
Yeah. Anything that has the potential to be a rail road, you know what I mean, in the future, that that has to be done.
They they can't, they can't afford. Anything, I mean, three houses should be an engineer, right?
Yeah.
And then, and and then.
I would say three or more, in my opinion, it would be three or more.
Three or more, yeah.
Three, because then it's a road.
But. Yes, but like I said, if if there was some sort of.
Nine one one kicks into a road at three houses.
Yeah, so we go at three, and then if you you got this, you brought up another issue about. Two houses could be on a eight eight hundred or thousand foot driveway.
And there could be eight units.
That's right, could be eight.
On those two.
So, yeah.
It's, yeah, but that's the thing where there's water and sewer, where in the village are you gonna do that?
No.
No.
Yeah, they have to municipal water and sewer to be a fourplex.
Oh. No, 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 you can put a fourplex, as long as you put it in the sewer system.
No, no, I don't think so.
And if the new state law where you can put a single family home or a fourplex, it's only with municipal service, so it could jump.
But. It's like a twoplex, it could be four, but you can still, you can still put a fourplex in.
Do it.
You could put a fourplex in, as long as you put in a septic system big enough, you can put in, you could put in a hundredplex.
Not on, not on, not on the fact of, on bylaws, because it upside of the.
Well, yeah, because look at Bashan Road.
Side of this. Water and sewer area.
No.
Ross, Bashan Road, he's doing those.
Yeah.
Those are fourplexes.
Those are fourplexes on Bashan, as long as you can put it in a sewer system, you can put in a hundred units if you wanted.
That's true. I'm wrong.
You're right, that's.
Because, because Rosie, like Rosie, I've had this conversation with him. He put in a very expensive septic system in the back of his building because of what he does there.
Yeah.
And and.
To be able to maintain.
To be able to, to be able to take the stuff he puts down the drain, and the conversation I've had with him is like, well. It's it's an investment in your future realistically, because obviously he's talked about growing and all of those things. If you go somewhere else, Rosie, that septic system's gonna more than handle four or five apartments, potentially.
Yeah.
In that building, in that same space, because you've got, he's got a very expensive septic system that he had to put in there.
Same space.
And I said, future wise, if you ever did leave that building, you you could put apartments in. Um, so yeah, it it's doable, look, it would be the same, it would be similar to tractor supply, look at the septic system they got in front of there.
And it's doable, it's not funny, but.
But I was going, when I was reading through this, are these smaller ones, you know, like you said, the road had to be so many feet wide, the driveway, whatever. Uh.
Well, you got some very expensive options, or they have dirt paths.
That's, that's the stuff, that's the stuff of putting in a house that could be on an eight foot wide little narrow goat path. That's the stuff I'm talking about, if we have, we say that driveway needs to be well feet wide.
I think it doesn't here.
That's, that's, that's the stuff I'm saying that that. I thought that's in here. Kevin could go out and.
Well, that's what I'm thinking, that there, even the zoning administrator could go out there and look at it, and if it's then there'd violate, because it's just a measurement thing.
That's only with two houses.
He were a house.
Yeah, that's right, that's what I'm talking, three houses.
Three, three, three is an engineer.
Talking about. You gotta have the engineer.
I'm talking about one house, low blow, Johnny wants to put in a house, wait, you know, in the back forty.
Yeah.
I'm thinking of, was it, uh, is it a Montaigne or Reynolds on, um.
Yeah, Reynolds.
Dun Dunter?
Reynolds, yeah, she married a Red, she was a Montaigne.
How long is that freaking driveway?
It's always a long way, that's for sure.
About a half a mile?
Yeah, exactly.
So, something like that, I'm.
Jennifer Reynolds, uh, Mick Monte's daughter.
So on, uh.
On the, uh, what's the road?
To Kellogg or Dunster?
Briggerboro, no, Kellogg, Kellogg, Kellogg.
Kellogg.
Kellogg, okay.
Excellent, that's a.
Yeah.
I mean, that in here, I believe we put in, needs a pull off so fire trucks can pass each other.
Yes, I I was reading that in there, so these, you know, I mean, if you've got the requirements of what a. Less than three houses driveway has to be. Then it should be easy to just have somebody.
That that part, Kevin could go to.
Yeah, that's.
It's this business going out, this business going out, okay.
No, no, no.
No, no, that's.
For a cul-de-sac and A seventy six standard.
No.
Gotta be so much.
Gotta have the engineer.
So that, the engineer's gotta be.
Yes, and then, and that.
There should be an engineer on that anyway.
That engineer thing ought to be filed as part of the.
So with their bylaw.
So. Yeah, no, it ain't with the bylaw, you're right, should be where, with the bylaw. So as in in the future, you go back there, okay, here's the engineer, he screwed up, we'll sue. You got somebody, you know.
The road's pumping, and it didn't meet specs.
Yeah.
As long as he hasn't moved over to New York, now he's a prison.
But we got somebody to go after. Oh, yeah, you know?
Oh, I don't.
I don't want to hire. But no, if that language is in there, uh, you know, either the zoning administrator or maybe Kevin, if you. I we have to have a select board discussion on that, and I don't sure how they're gonna feel about it, but I agree that, uh. You know, if there's something that's done consistently for everybody, I don't see it as being a problem.
I, and that's what we need to start.
See, he checks, Kevin checks. Holdout parts in the driveway.
For calls, and the cuts.
Yeah.
Perfect.
And and that's good.
Yeah.
And that, and I'd say the same thing.
And Amy does the same thing in the village, we 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 pulled a cut in the village to our duplex, and he came, oh, yeah, I know, you know what I mean, like.
Yeah.
If they're coming to do that anyways.
Right.
Okay, well, this road, this road's a, this one's a long one, check it out here.
I got a lot. And all these vehicles that are too many vehicles in the parking lot, you should have the chairman of the select board, well, verify whether these.
Well, you know who used to do that?
I, me, them, no, I agree a hundred percent with.
Dick Thompson used to do that.
Yeah.
Dick used to go out for a ride and double check, double down on a lot of this stuff and inspects and stuff. Um. I know what you're talking. I know what's.
I think there's some room to.
Don't worry, my sub bus has got a triangle on it.
I think there is some room to address this, uh, enforcement issue, you know, I I believe the select board will see this as a reasonable thing. And, you know, it's just matter to get the protocol set in place. Get these zoning bylaws updated so the laws are reasonable, you know, some of them setbacks were a little bit extreme before. Uh, especially on smaller acre lots.
We've only hit.
So you changed the limits on R one, right, to.
So far, I got some. Let's see, only one so far.
Twenty five.
One of the, one of the.
I got some on yours.
R. Maybe, maybe, well, I'll I'll take notes, but I'd like, I'd like Cory to walk here.
I'll, I'll. I walk here.
I agree.
But I agree, I know, uh.
Did you do on the other ones too, like R three?
Those are all gone.
There's no.
It's all gonna be, it's all the same now.
Okay, can I make better sense?
I would, I would like to. Get somebody's car, yeah.
Oh, Jim's got it again.
Jim came to the list. Earl, did you, did you have anything else?
Take this rule, uh, I'm looking through here for.
That's, that's.
Oh, Jim, let's know why you took away rec, why everything is the same. And I said, because you had no difference between recreation, conservation, and shoreline, so you made it one.
Up there, we felt that there, again, is a ton.
Strong Hill, French Hill.
There's a ton of conserved land up there already, state land.
Well, why didn't we add that in R one?
Pound land. It's all part of the same.
Why we got that? Huh?
You're you're talking about French Hill?
That's French Hill.
That's gonna all be a part of the residential history.
See, right now, the way it's set up is combined with this over here, has been for years.
They're not there with recreation and their shoreline recreation.
And it's two completely. Yeah, those are two completely different.
So this is gonna go back to R one?
Yeah.
Oh, alright.
That's, no, that's, the plan was to turn that to R one, because.
Yeah.
It's all, what is what is conserve, and then this over here is gonna be shoreline rec, and then I believe.
Shore.
That's federal.
That's federal, and this was gonna go to shoreline rec and be the same, the little bit out here was gonna be shoreline rec. And be the same as McComb Shore, and this was gonna go to R one.
So write that down, check with Cory.
That's going into recreation.
Uh, is that how Cory did it?
According to the way, I think it is, recreation and conservation.
No, we might have.
RC district, I believe.
You remember, Oliver?
I thought we didn't weigh the. We might have.
Give me back.
I think we didn't weigh the recreation.
Same.
I thought you did too, I thought you made it all one.
RC, recreational conservation. That's what this was and this up here.
Correct, and this we were gonna put into residential.
Okay, that's good.
And but this out here, I thought we were gonna as well.
Get all your number.
But it's mostly all in land trust.
Both of them.
Probably have more, but people.
Some of it's in land, some of it's not.
A lot of stuff.
Maybe some people get it.
I mean, I should, I realize what he brought, uh, more in language than I thought out there.
Yeah, I think, I think all of Levex is in the credit.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, exactly, so basically, then.
Isn't Levex, isn't, uh. Uh, Macy's, what Macy's bought, that all in land trust?
Out there on Lakewood, yeah, but.
I was, so, no, not like, yeah, on Lakewood, yeah, on Lakewood.
Yeah, Lakewood.
Look at that on the.
And then there's some more going in there, and I'm not sure whose land, is that the rest, is he, he bought the rest of the, uh, the old road going by?
I thought he bought, I thought that's all the land trust out there.
One side was, one side wasn't, I believe.
I think, I.
The one side. Let's see, Macy bought the side that.
Ryan J bought some too.
Oh, uh.
Who?
Ryan Jordan bought some from Lucier.
No, no, he bought it from, uh, Lafar.
Lafar or Lucier?
I don't buy any from Lucier.
Those are, those are.
Boucher, Boucher's just bought a farm out there, uh, on our.
Yeah, he bought from.
There's all of them.
Yeah, he bought the old Blue, uh, Norman.
Part of what was Norman's, and Norman had sold to, uh. Somebody else.
Uh, Foremere, Roger Foremere, from Franklin, yeah, yeah, Arden, yeah.
Arden Foremere.
Arden.
This doesn't show who owns what, dude.
That was what I could tell you for.
Yeah, it is there, man.
I was going. I thought I was on my phone, but I wasn't. So this, this is, this is Levex, this must be all Macy's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Here's Macy's is.
Yeah.
A big section of this one right here.
Yeah.
It's all.
Now, this here, as far as I know, I don't believe.
Well, must be they're putting it in there now, because there is.
Maybe she's.
It's, oh, he buying, he buying something down there.
Oh, he's buying that, but he bought out on.
Yeah. He bought one side of the road, now I think he'd buy the other side.
But he also just bought, uh, Lakewood. The Canadian outfit, uh, Lakewood.
Oh, he bought that last week, he bought that place too, you're right, you're right, the one with the roundhouse, I've seen that one.
Yeah, I've seen that one.
Yeah.
No, not the roundhouse, but the land.
Yeah, I know, but that's right, I know the land, the old Curtis Farm, yeah.
Ninety eighters.
So that's all Ronnie made, Rich. Which one are you looking at?
And then he also owns, uh, the old Cogan Farm. Which is that green one on the other side of Paper Grove?
This one right here, yeah, where they had the truck.
Yeah. Yeah, truck round, yeah.
I knew that, uh.
That's the Ronnie Macy's.
What's that?
That green one's all Ronnie's.
Yeah, that's Ronnie's.
See, go up.
Which this?
Oh, I know what the problem is, go up a little higher there, uh, no, the other one.
That's the campground.
See that?
Yeah.
That's campground.
This is.
Okay, because it looked differently from the plant, but now it's changed again.
And this is the campground sewer.
That's the campground's land.
That's the work.
That's their sewer in the sugar woods, yeah. Making some good syrup out there with that sewer, see? Like Dad used to say, they used to make some good syrup right in the cemetery down.
Yeah.
They did, they, my grandfather, he set out the trees in the cemetery.
So, land it down a little bit more, okay?
So this is that, only, only that section, and 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 I thought the conversation we had was, there's potential for growth there. Like.
It would be there, yeah.
And 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 why would we leave that in that rec, if if. If that is all conserve, why would we leave that in a, in a recreation land when there's so much recreation land already?
Yeah, and because the conditional uses were an issue, this is bad, that shoreline recreation's had changed several times.
Well, and we're not focused.
It's, it's, it's okay for, uh, uh, maybe a certain area, but then you get into these situations here where it doesn't make any sense.
And that's where we were talking about doing away with not the shoreline rec, but the conservation recreation.
Yeah.
Because that's, that's gonna be valuable infill land that we are gonna need, same with French Hill. French Hill was three acre minimums, and French Hill has some, some decent building lots, like you could talk.
I know, but.
They, Dave, those just built a nice, nice house up there, I mean, imagine a handful of those houses down through there.
There's an issue with French Hill, yeah.
Well, part of it's.
It's a hell of a ways to go for, they gotta leave swamp to get here.
There's no school lesson either.
Oh, I, I know, I I wouldn't.
Okay, so, but I, I, you're right, I mean, it's an area, and but this area here, and you see, if you go way up, uh, head back towards seventy eight.
Up where they're building those houses.
Yeah, they're building houses, and they're gonna be building more out there, and it's the only, it. You know, it makes a lot of sense to make sure that you could at least use that land for that way, now Ryan, uh, Jordan bought the Lafar property. And he was gonna put up, I don't know.
He was talking about.
Putting five duplexes in there.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Queens Court.
Duplexes, there's four duplexes at least going in there.
Yeah. Yeah. And.
That's where it's at.
That's Queens Court.
And that was Lafar.
Yeah, so that's.
Yeah.
I thought it was Lucier, okay.
Dying in.
No, no, there was fifteen acres there, I farmed it for a number of years for, like, I, I came to that, uh.
That he bought.
I picked all stones out of it.
You picked.
There's.
So they pay you to buy or not?
No.
Depending on what district is what here.
Yeah, I'm listening.
Depends on the setbacks.
Yes.
Right there.
I mean, they're fifty foot. Yeah, it's, you know.
Those are, those, any, any fifty side and rear, side and rear go for twenty four.
That's what I would think.
Yeah, that would make a lot of sense, you can leave the front alone and do the side in the back. That's the plan.
Here.
All your lake shore.
Yeah.
Personally, I think it should go to ten feet.
Lake Shore, we did.
Inside setbacks.
We deferred to the state, I thought we made those smaller and then deferred to the state, what we were trying to do on Lake Shore.
Here's what you did, um, this one, or.
We had a conversation about it, that doesn't mean to get none. Cory, the other problem with doing this, we've been talking about this for so long.
Shoreline district.
How can you remember?
Okay. Here's. A half to seventy five with makes twenty foot side back. Here you got down here, a quarter to a half acre, twenty foot sides. Then you come down here with a twelfth to twenty four hundredths of an acre to a fifteen, why not make them all fifteen or all ten?
We had a conversation about that, am I, am I going crazy?
That's, that's what I, and not get into any. Whistling deals down there that the person can't do.
Well, I think the reason we left. We also had a conversation about the fact that, the other thing we gotta remember is if someone creates a law. That it meets requirements, that's what that.
Yeah, again, what you're talking about, preexisting.
Preexisting, less.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, preexisting laws, now, the, the thing we, the way I thought we had left it was we essentially were gonna defer. To whatever the state was gonna let them do on that.
Yeah, because on a shoreline, they need.
They're, 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 they're looking at it tighter than we are.
They are now, other than just the shoreline.
About. But if they're impacting the shoreline, they're gonna have a say in what they're doing, if they're within two.
Four hundred feet?
It's not, it's.
Ask Cory.
I thought of this. I mean, the, the realistic reason is why are they coming for the development review board for putting a shed on?
Hmm?
You know, I'm going through this, uh.
No, I, I mean.
Thirty percent rule is a crack of hope.
Yeah, because it's a preexisting, nonconforming law.
Especially when they're only fifty foot wide.
Yeah. I think, you know, with, fifteen foot seemed like a good compromise to me, and then you can just put in there, you know, uh. State may not like it, and you may not get it to it.
Well, whatever the state says, if the state's got control, that's fine.
Yeah.
But when you get down there, and you get down, and you've got a number of lots that, uh, people came up here and bought at one time, bought a hundred foot, and then they turned and sold down so a half. Their brother-in-law or somebody else to put a camp on and.
Before you know, they're real smart.
So they're, you know, they're only fifty foot wide, but they were all set up for a hundred foot width.
Yeah. Okay, I got that in mind.
Yeah, well, that's the.
Yeah. That's the trouble with the older lots, you're gonna have some kind of more flexibility.
Well, this will affect, this affects even the older lots.
Yes.
When this comes out, it shows, hey, it's gonna affect the older lots too, just the same way.
Any others?
Hmm?
Got any more?
Wow, you're just starting.
We're rolling in on ten, we're rolling in on ten minutes.
Okay. Well, I gotta tell you guys, I'm gonna, you have to be there because.
Ten and seven, we're gonna probably, yeah.
We'll probably get more done, definitely, obviously.
I thought he was coming back quick too, but he, they must have started asking questions and say, oh, it's over.
You know, that enforcement issue, we definitely need to have more conversation.
And I'm, I, I don't think it's something that's gonna happen overnight, Earl, I think it's something, we gotta start that ball rolling, it might take a year or two.
No, but we gotta.
And is, is there a town engineer, I mean, you know, town?
No. You don't get here.
I would, that would be, and I could.
Like, what do you have to pay for?
Well, unless it's an engineer that has his own job and everything, and we contract him.
Well, you know, they did in Shelburne for a walk-in? The town road foreman would take a loaded tandem dump truck, or he'd force the contractor, get it to, loaded tandem up here, drive it down that road. And if I see any ruts, you're gonna fix it. And that, and that's what the, he just passed away uh, a year or two ago, I saw his, his obituary, he'd, he'd been a road foreman in Shelburne for like. Forty years or something crazy, and that was his thing, he had to bring out a loaded tandem and drive it down that road before they whacktopped it. And if he saw any ruts from that tandem, start over.
Well, I don't think we wanna do it that way, I mean, I, I agree with that, I, there was a time when that, everything was done that way, we were a hell of a lot better off than we are now. Uh, but, we're kinda gonna change that.
The engineers can't work.
I think the rest of it, you know, uh. You're gonna make a lot of improvements, uh, you know, cutting back on some setbacks, things like that, gonna make a lot of sense. And the other thing, uh, you know, giving uh, the zoning administrator a little more leeway in there, and that's why we may need to adjust the rates. Because there's gonna be time when they, because of these changes, they're not coming before the zoning board. You know, that permit may have to be a little bit higher, so we don't, it's too much income, I mean, we're not self.
What are we, what are we, yeah, what are we talking about?
Well, you don't come before the development review board, you don't meet the guys on the development review board, so you don't have to worry about it.
Oh, you'll still be in there, you're still gonna have to do work.
We don't do this to get paid though, I, it was nice when we got that check right before Christmas. The hardest part about that check was I had to give it to my wife.
Well, I think you guys have done a hell of a good job, and it's a very important job. You know, I wanted to get. Come and find out more about what's been going on, but, like I said, there's a lot of things can come up at the last second, which not good for the process.
Well, and like I said, and if you can, obviously, we'll, we'll explain it too, but. I, I strongly feel we're gonna, we're gonna put this through in six months. You know, sometime this summer, especially like Cory said, the legislature's gonna do some crazy shit again.
Yeah, we may have some other.
Let's, let's throw some more stuff in and, and try and get some out of it now.
And then, like, when I was talking to Chris in the other day, uh. You're gonna present this to the select.
Yes.
And I think that ought to be a, a separate meeting.
First, before the public meeting.
Yeah, maybe, yes, before your public meeting? Okay, yeah, I think that's a good point.
You gotta find out from Cory, which one, they, when there's one of them, you warn, that's the day people can come in and get permits, before it's approved or not.
Yeah. Make sure all, yeah, we can, I, I really think that'd be beneficial for everybody. And I don't wanna have it, we would go to a regular meeting because it's gonna, this is too important.
We needed you, I'm not saying, and I know everybody's got, but. Honestly, we should have met with you or the board six months ago. When we started and talked about some of these things, you know what I mean, like, some of this stuff before we really got into things, it's not that it's too late, it's not.
No, it's not, it's not too late at all.
But. But some of this stuff could have been talked about before to make sure we don't show up and have them blindsided. And say, you're putting industry and southern growth, whoa, 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 we don't want, you know what I mean, even though it was your idea, but.
Manufacturer, be careful, you know, you say manufacturer, doesn't sound me bad. But I, but I'm really serious about that, what I was, I, I think if you're, if you're planning.
Yep, I, I, I.
From a sustainable standpoint, you need to have a place for people to work as well as with the grant period and everything like that.
No, you're right.
Just, you can't leave that out. And that is an area I think was got some attraction for that, especially where the, you know. The way manufacturers going today isn't like the old days. Maybe.
The other thing that really gets to make me wonder, the planning commission. To do a plan like this, they should really be doing the subdivisions like they used to, they would have a better idea of what could become in the form, I don't know who changed that, I was.
That stays that way.
Stay, it wasn't stay that, yeah, I think it is, yeah.
That stays that way.
That's, I, I agree with you, I mean, you know.
They're the ones.
That was the other.
That was where you collected all this information, your mother went through that, you collected the information, then you could say, okay, here's what we have to do.
Well, and one of the things I, I mentioned, and I'm not, and I, it would be a staff thing, and it would make more work for your Amy or Christina, like, I, I, I don't know. But like. You go to, I've been to a few planning commission and DRB meetings in Milton, and. The board walks in and they have a full staff review of the project, and I'm not saying we need a staff review of the project. But what I'm getting at is, and I know the reason this might be an issue is, is it extends timelines, which sucks, but. If someone comes in for a PUD, for a large development, like Maple Tree, Ma- Maple Grove, um. Bring it to us, have us, and even if the person doesn't come, if Amy or you provide, like, this is what they wanna do. Planning commission takes a look and makes some notes before the DRB reviews it, to just have an idea what it is, and maybe put some input like. Well, we did duh 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 because of this, like, this fits why we did this, or, we, we don't have any say, but we can give some input on that. To say, oh, this matched our vision for.
And this Jim's favorite development, that would have never happened if he was able to view it, huh?
What's this?
That's a PUD.
Are you telling back to Harvest Lane? Oh, Harvest Lane would have never happened if Jim was allowed to.
So I don't know when we get this scheduled, but. When we can get a meeting scheduled, uh. But find out about that, what we're talking about when it goes into facts.
So let me ask you this, would it make more sense, I'm trying. It make more sense for like myself, a couple of us to come to a select board meeting before the main meeting and try and get on an agenda and just have a.
It's a time thing, that's the thing.
How about if they had copies? I think that's a much better idea. What?
How about if they had copies?
They not, they not reading, I'm not seeing.
They had that copy for a week now, and Earl's the only one that's reached out about it, they all got it the same day he did.
There's quite a lot to read in that, man.
It is, they have.
Well, I know.
Listen, if Earl can read it, y'all can read it.
Digestion. I would prefer reading it on paper, but.
I just have to, I, I.
I probably would compromise it for the day eight.
I print, Jim?
Oh, he did?
Where?
Is it gonna be less pages than the last one?
Well, it will be many less pages, because if you notice.
Ninety.
Ninety last.
Ninety total, I think.
See?
Now it's two hundred.
But with everything, but once it get cleaned up, Cory was saying it was gonna be like a hundred pages.
So it'd be fifty.
I think he mentioned like fifty or a hundred.
But it'll be, I think that'll make life a lot easier for people too.
Oh, absolutely. Hey, I'm simple, give us a simple, simple.
I gave it a hundred percent.
So, yeah, just, you know, keep us, uh, gotta get together. You know, and I think the enforcement issue, they need to hear what.
I mean, you're running out of time to go to meetings too, aren't you?
Ross.
With the enforcement issue, the hardest part of the enforcement issue.
Mark.
What?
Well, we already said.
Is the person that's got authority, they'll go out there and really crack them on the head and know about, get them.
He was gonna let it to your party, didn't he?
Yeah, we're gonna. There's one at home.
Yeah.
Quite with it.
And that's seven, one, four, or.
I thought the twenty second was tentative, you hadn't agreed on yet.
Put in my phone, I put the mic on twenty second.
Okay, what's it gonna be the whole? What's it gonna be though?
But it probably wouldn't be much before February, yeah. Definitely, you know, even if you wanted to do something.
But they could come to a February meeting, two of them come to a February meeting and discuss it.
Yeah. If you want to stick with the enforcement issue, yes, I think that would be a way to do it. But if you wanna bring out all those others, to, you know, a presentation of the bylaws, I don't think that's. It's gonna take up too much time if you wanna do it right. You know, you're gonna have to go damn slow, you know, the pages.
So, here's what I think. When, when's your next meeting?
Uh, tomorrow.
Can, can you talk to the board and see if you guys can carve out a day where we get together and, and.
Yeah, yeah.
Get, I mean. I'll try and be flexible and, and try and find a day that we can get together, we'll, we'll have to warn it like regular meeting.
Yes.
But.
Have to be warned.
Do you wanna do it as a joint meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, uh, what I would like, get the select board in and sit at this table.
Yeah.
And, and literally take this thing and, and.
Yeah.
See, there's another factor I just saw in there that came up, and I know one of the select board members had a. Problem with it, in other words, somebody took a outbuilding that's right back up to his line and put living quarters in it. And it's in there that it shouldn't have been. Now, who's gonna enforce that? This person comes in from out of town, comes in, buys the property, puts that in, oh, I can have a place to put people up for the night.
Well, we've got one of those in the village that Amy permitted under it, it's like.
Well, this one never got permitted.
That, that, that.
Because they could do what they want.
Still thousands of miles.
So if they go to the bathroom at night, they have to run across the lawn into the.
Into the house?
Into the camp to go to the bathroom.
Yeah, well, you know, some of that stuff is kind of petty though.
It is petty, but it's the idea.
I know, I know, but these people can, can be somewhat, unless the, the reason why somebody's got a problem is most of the time. It, it's probably not bothering anybody anyway, so you gotta be careful, uh, one thing about, um. People, you gotta balance between, but, you know, people need to have reasonable use of the property that needs tax.
Oh, yeah. That's my.
Yeah, you have to protect the community and the environment and all that stuff, but it, it's a tough thing to do.
I'll give you a little story about it, I got a brother on the other end of the state. And he'll do it, I just do whatever I want, well, hey. What's gonna happen the day your grandchildren take over the property, they wanna sell the property, or your daughter wants to sell the property, you can't have this.
Yeah.
Oh, select board, don't sign off on us, because it's me.
They don't know it, but, no, I think you guys have done a good job, a very important job too, and, you know, I, we'll see what we can do, uh, bring it up more night, we can, uh. Get that meeting going. You know, hopefully, in a reasonable amount of time, at least we get started on it, cause what's your, what was your target date on this?
I don't think, I mean, we were hoping to have it done before spring, we're not trying to drag everything out, but. If it means we get to have a meeting with you guys and sit down and have them understand, like, the manufacturing in Southern Grove District, there, there's some big ticket items like that that should be.
Yeah. Yeah.
Should be talked about, we have forced.
Yeah, and this road issue, okay, that's another issue.
Well, I dare say that you don't need to have another meeting until you meet with the select board then. Why don't you make that?
We gotta get our maps.
Oh, I think try to, we'll try to do it for the first meeting in December, I mean, February.
Where?
First meeting in February. Cause that, we don't do the order that night, so, you know, it depends, and I don't know if it's anything else, but I'll, I'll try to shoot for that date.
See if.
February fourth? To Tuesday now.
Um, I don't.
So do it the second, do it the end of February.
Well, I, no, I would like to meet with them in the next month. If we wanna stay on track, we're gonna have to meet with you guys fairly soon, and I'm not trying, you guys have enough going on, but. Been doing this long enough to, we should, we should have met before now.
Yeah, yeah.
It's what it comes down to, I'm not placing blame, I'm just being factual.
I've ended kind of asking around and stuff, but, you know.
You guys.
It didn't get done, let's just say it.
Well, you guys got too much going on too, you got so many.
The thing that could come out of this, that, you know, if you get some of these corrections done tonight, and a big thing in my estimation. Let's leave out all this stuff that's underlying that's coming out of there.
At the next meeting?
What do you mean leave it out, you can't.
You know, any paper that goes to them, so that they don't have all this to read.
You can't, because they've gotta read what it was and what it's gonna be.
Yeah, that's.
You really, really wanna read what it was, really like, just wanna know what it's doing, what it's been proposed.
But they might not like some of the things you're taking down.
But that's how we gotta, yeah. That's how we gotta propose it in public, so I'm too public, we see it.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, too.
It's gonna propose, it has to be proposed that way to the public?
Now, what about the select board coming to the twenty sec, Wednesday, the twenty second meeting?
Yeah, we can bring that up for the construction, yeah.
Could we do that?
Wednesday, February twenty second?
Yeah.
March, or January?
January, or January. Your meeting.
Yeah. We have a meeting proposed.
Alright, then we've got to off.
They're really good, yeah.
Yeah.
They could come to the.
It would be better actually, because they're not, they have a long issue.
Then nobody be here.
Yeah, nobody's gonna come.
And can you?
If it's not a select board meeting.
Can you? Well, that'll, we're gonna be all together.
No, but if, if you're not a regular select board meeting, you're not.
Well, no, 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 Chris.
No, nobody has come over.
If we're on the street and there's three of us talking, it's a people.
No, no, she, she's talking about, she's talking about warning it, but nobody's gonna show up.
Oh, 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 okay.
It'll just be the playing commission and the select board.
If, yeah, people think you're.
It's, it's.
No, 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 I, I agree with you, if people think you're coming as a select board to our meeting, they're less likely to show up than. Knowing it's a select board meeting and where, and not that we don't want people here, but you know how muddy the water gets.
Yeah.
Anybody's welcome, but.
Okay, uh, let's, uh, try to shoot for that, that's even a better idea, because then we can just, and time wise, is this five o'clock a bad thing for you people?
It works the best, because if you start at six thirty, seven o'clock, you did nothing done.
Yes, that's right, right.
Five o'clock is the best.
Alright, okay, that might, that might sell the deal, because.
So we can propose them tomorrow.
Why they stay with like, earlier?
And it's, well, I'll make, yeah, I think I do.
And even, even if we, even, and I'm not saying I don't want the whole board to show up, but even if a couple others, even if it's not a full board and.
Of course, I shoot for a bar.
But they should be able to new five o'clock to twenty second, they're all pretty local.
Yeah. Yeah. But maybe it's possible, alright.
On a, a Wednesday, I can't be there five o'clock.
Don't let it forget either.
What's, what's that all?
I can't be there at five o'clock on a Wednesday, it'll, I can be there by six, but I, you can either call in or I can just show up late.
You can wear your blue parrot and you can uh, give shots while we're dogging.
I left my blue parrot at home, I had to use my AirPods today.
Alright, thank you.
Bye, Earl, see you tomorrow.
Appreciate it.
Yes.
See you tomorrow.
Um. Cory's in there, I think we got a lot out of Earl, I think.
So you wanted, you wanna do the next meeting, January twenty second joint?
If possible, I think we do a meeting.
With select board?
And, and.
And then?
As much of the select board as can come, if a couple of them like.
I, I think the.
Yeah.
I think it'll be fine. And then, we want Cory to set the public hearing and the select board here.
On the twenty second?
Yeah.
Sure. Makes sense.
Yeah, well, cause you know, I don't think it's wise to do anything further until you're done with that, because as soon as you learn those. People are gonna be, there's a couple of them that are waiting, and the day they do that, they're gonna.
Yeah. No.
Because then it, it's illegal, you can do that.
Okay, um. Do we, you got a few more things, or you wanna talk with Cory?
Well, I was hoping Cory could be here when he get it, like this way. That is one of my better concerns, that respect, now, um, I bring up one thing here. That I noticed shows up is a, uh. Table two point one seven shows up in his paperwork here, but two point one seven got eliminated.
He's, he's gotta all clean that up, he, I know if he was wanting to clean it up.
I just wanna make sure that he knows that.
That, that's.
That they show up in there.
And when was that printed, last week?
This year, we just printed.
So I think that or.
Coffee.
Uh.
Twenty second last week, probably. Or the coffee with the corrections and everything.
Your app.
Yeah, um, that's how I get my thing.
She did, last Thursday, maybe.
No.
Okay.
It's just.
A lot of. Uh, I mean, I can get that by email.
Oh, yes, do you want me to send it?
Absolutely.
So the, uh, but there are some things like that.
The working group.
The other thing, so I don't, if you want it, yeah.
If you also, in my, in my, uh, it's side setbacks, and then the other is the PUDs.
Like a week ago?
Wow. Like you said, my email.
No, please, I'll read it in my email, I don't want to say.
PUD has nothing other than a.
No, I never saw anything. Kind of a description?
Description. And then there's a, in here, there's another three, and of course, I still, and I don't think I see a lot of guns bound in my life. Or, you know, building.
Yeah, but they're gonna change. That, that, that all changed, every, every.
I really would like to see proposed driveways or farms.
Well, especially. Huh? Huh?
I really would like to see proposed driveways on my lines.
The driveway's gotta be.
See, you can do numbering?
Nine one one will not number them without a proposed driveway in it. I give them the Mylar and they number them, we don't have to change the number five times.
I'll tell you what the problem is with changing numbers.
Proposed driveways, painted a line.
Well, I'll tell you the problem with one driveway is right across the road from me.
Well, we can't, that.
Big loads. I'm against that. Oh, they, do you know how many packages get dropped?
No, I don't.
Because they don't, well, yeah, because his driveway is, he owns seventy-seven and he's eighty, eighty whatever, eighty-eight, and they think it's somewhere around me, but his driveway is way down.
They just send that to me.
Not, it's not hit, I understand, it's just.
Yeah, they have a platform out there for that, but.
I, I just need to message him or put it over by his mailbox and. And it maybe happens a couple times a year, but it still is like, that sucks, how many of those are there in town? Where they can't find that address because it's out of order.
Hmm, there are too many of them, or something. You see, that's a one, that's a wrong driveway.
That's one of those driveways that should have been, you know what I mean, just make sure. Um.
And you, I'm gonna forward you the email.
Okay, I think if you guys are good, I think we, we adjourned. We got the twenty second.
Do you want me to send it to both your emails? I have SWPC forty-four and AWL LaRocque, I have Gmail.
Do the Gmail.
That forty-four store.
And there you go, come to your way. You know what, should I send it to Oliver? Oliver?
Earth one.
But.
Do you want me to send you the working draft? Of these bylaws?
Sure, I'll pretend like I have time to read it.
Okay.
For about five feet, they can be five feet?
Well, that should only be in the village here, or five feet should be anything else, not, the other thing should be one only.
Which, yeah, we need to crack it out, that's enforcement.
That would be, yeah, that should be stated in here, one only.
Per law.
Yes, yes, without a permit, they can have it, not only the same size, but they're gonna get a permit for it.
Yes, I agree.
They shouldn't have to get a permit for that one, don't call it. It should be required to come to permit, to get a permit.
Chad City, yeah, it does it, so it, well, it says one detached. You're saying make it more clear.
See, this, yeah, this, but this here is a uh zoning permit. And administration and enforcement, there are a lot of one in there, people read that, well, I can bring one in, I don't need any.
Yeah, well, that, that's, that's a common knowledge thing that a lot of people, oh, you can have one under a hundred square feet, you don't need a permit, and nobody ever.
Yes, you want me to send this to your, um, maple running here?
I'm just saying, there's one, uh it should be kind of one only, this minimum of five feet, I can understand that in the village here, but the rest of the town, like, it's crazy.
Let him, let him bury it in the backyard.
In the area.
I have trees, you need a hill, but my dad always says, I need a hill, so I can hide all my shit.
I, I.
From my mother is who he's referring to, he needs a hill, because my mother almost gets after him about this random stuff over by her.
Yeah, send this select board an email requesting them to attend a joint meeting.
No, is there, I would like something put in the bylaws about storing too much in the cellar.
No.
Yes.
Where have you been and saw that, Cory?
House, all right, do you want to?
You ever been in, I've been, I've been in an apartment building in the, in the village here that they had to get after the rent, or the home, uh, rent there.
Alright, this is another little piece of thing that I took out of, I happened to see, let's see, this is in, uh they almost, they put in there.
Explaining them?
We have a little one, a one, and I think this might be someplace else, but if it was kept big, it's a uh.
That's St. Olmstead Town?
Yeah, this is St. Olmstead Town. At least something sort of, maybe this is on one page or some other page, something of that nature, just to make it easy for people to read and understand. Actually, this one here.
Yeah. I put that on, I'm like, he's in the talking. Yeah. Um.
You know, pictures worth a lot of, it's worth many words.
Well, and it's gonna say, but here's the other problem we have, and it's not Amy's fault, but how many people even attempt?
You know, a few of them.
There's some.
You get, well, they get denied for one thing or another.
Well, that's it, but I mean, most people just automatically just come in and expect her to do it. And, and it's part of her job, but I can understand why, it's like, yeah, here, here's the bylaws, figure it out, and if it was clearer, more people may. Um, that would almost be in our definitions.
Other thing that I was gonna ask Cory, uh, was the fact that every time there's a sale, she has to go and give a certification.
Certificate.
Certificate of compliance.
Certificate of compliance.
And that's checking cert, what, the certificate of compliance checks setbacks?
Nope.
Checks structures.
Only there was, I tried to see that it looks like it's what it says.
There's no unpermitted structures, but.
The thing is.
It's a drive up the road, what if there's a deck in the back? And then once they get that, the new homeowners, they can't go after them for a permit, because when they bought it, it was compliant.
House and road. An example, there's one up there, there's a house up there, they took the deck, it was on the back of the house. They enclosed it and added a garage underneath the deck, enclosed the deck, and added another deck behind it. That was never.
Permitted.
Was never permitted, no, that stuff is permitted. But in realization, in her drive-by, not allowed to get out and walk there, she said.
Who says? Who says? Brian walks around with companies, but he's.
Yeah.
It's gonna get shot one of these days, I'm afraid.
Is it in compliance with what is in town office? Right? No, if it's been done more than actually over the years before. Constantly, it is.
Is it fifteen?
Um, I'm not sure that it was said. So, if it's a salary, it's something like that. That what they find in there, but we'd be surprised, some of these places, people will win. And do a region, then, then add the, that, I don't know, dark one side.
Alright, I don't think he's gonna be out, I'm gonna say, I'd, uh, Saturday night meeting, the twenty second.
Yeah.
Um, I would say any other necessary business.
Oh, I'm gonna make the motion, yeah, I'm gonna make the motion that we adjourn.
I said, motion's been made, seconded, any discussion? All those in favor of signify, say no.
Bye.
Thanks, Ollie.
Thank you.
The, uh, maybe on the twenty second.